I'm going to call this meeting to order. Ann, if you could show in the record that all seven commissioners are present. As far as this meeting is concerned, I don't see any correspondence specific for this meeting. This first meeting at 3:00 is a special meeting of the commissioners with two things on the agenda. One is the award recommendations for the wayfinding and sign program, and the second is final summary, bid award for the dock project. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Evan Millian, Evan Miller, to speak about the wayfinding signage.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Happy to be here today to present a bid award recommendation to you all for the wayfinding and signage program, which was designed through Merge. So attached to the agenda and also in your packet are several documents that are related to the Merge wayfinding signage bid recommendation. So for your review and hopefully approval later today, there's a bid tabulation that was prepared by Beacon Engineering, who's with us here today, that they had reviewed and put together after the bid opening that took place. I believe it was February 4th. So based upon that bid tabulation, Hilton Displays is the apparent low bidder. We had five bids total. The total base bid amount was $109,085.58. The add alternate one is totaling $107,361.17. Add alternate two is $3,176.32. And then the final add alternate three is $16,648.68 for a total project cost or total bid of $236,271.75. So I think it was great that we were not only able to get just the base bid, but also all three of the add alternates to come in under budget. If you recall, back in October, you all had authorized an expenditure of up to $278,660 out of the current fiscal year budget, so expiring at the end of March from the current budget for the signage program, which shows that the project came in under that amount totaling roughly $42,388. I will mention that Merge, following the receive, after we received the bids, Merge did contact Hilton Displays. They did not only a phone interview, but also sent them a questionnaire just to verify that they submitted the bid that included, you know, all the, they understood all the requirements, construction, design elements that are really specific to those contract documents, which they were. And in anticipation of the recommendation to award the project to Hilton, if it's acceptable, we have a notice to award prepared in your packet as well. So at that point, I turn it over to any questions that you might have.
Anybody questions? Please feel free.
Yeah, is there, does Merge and Hilton have any experience working with each other?
So Merge has not directly worked with Hilton before in the past, and it is described in Beacon Engineering's report to you all that I believe Merge has worked with Mr. William Clark, who has been the Hilton representative throughout the bidding and bid evaluation process, but Merge has not previously worked with Hilton before. So that was one of the reasons why we also had them not only set up a phone call with them to go over their bid, but also to complete the questionnaire.
What is Hilton's experience in terms of doing this type of municipal signage?
From my understanding, they have significant experience. I hadn't taken the time to go through any supplemental documentation that they might have provided that sort of showcases some of the work that they had done. So we kind of had deferred to Merge as the experts on that, and they came back and said that they are confident with this bidder and recommends that we award the bid to Hilton.
Appreciate all your work.
Absolutely.
I actually went to the bid opening, and it was really educational because the costs were all over the map.
Right, they were.
They really were. Some of them were, you know, double this. So I'm glad that this company checked out. There was a discussion, a brief discussion that day about the schedule. Can you remind us what the story is there?
I can. So basically, about a week from the notice to proceed, there will be a pre-construction meeting scheduled. Following that pre-construction meeting, that's when really they start the process of doing the shop drawings. That'll take approximately three weeks. They'll provide samples of the signage that will take approximately four weeks. And then also, four weeks out, we'll do a final field markout of where all the signs are going. We've already done this before, but we'll do it again with the bidder. Pole installation, we've asked that the poles be installed prior to May 21st with the expectation that we can get a lot of the concrete work done, poles installed prior to the busy Memorial Day weekend. And then by that point, you know, the poles will be installed, and then it's just putting up the signage.
And that'd be June, right?
What's that?
The signage would be June?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then, and if they can get signage up before then as well, anything that they can get done prior to May 21st is the goal. And then...
The goal is May 21st, you said?
For the poles.
For the poles, yes.
The poles, and then what date in June?
And if they can get signage up before then too, that's the hope.
And what's the, what's the actual date that they have to have all the signage up?
I don't think that we have a substantial completion date yet. I think that's sort of to be determined based upon the pre-construction meeting that we have with them. But for right now, we've just identified the May 21st as being the deadline of sort of having any disturbance in the public right of way or public space completed.
You expect the signs to be up in June?
Yes, or before then.
Or before.
Mm-hmm.
Tight schedule.
Yeah, very tight schedule.
Do we know the text, the final text for all the signs yet? Is that known, or is that still a little bit fluid?
Yes, so the content itself is still being finalized. One thing that I'll indicate is that we have, in some of the pedestrian kiosks, we have interpretive panels, which just provides sort of historical information about the city of Rehoboth Beach. We have been working with the Historical Society on putting together brief descriptions with photos, site-specific. So wherever a kiosk is located, we're pulling some historical information about that location, and we're going to include that on the map as well, or on the interpretive panel as well. We had some back and forth with the state parks because they wanted to make sure that Gordon's Pond was conveyed correctly. So that's been worked out. But other than that, the content itself, we have a couple more weeks to finalize, but most of that has been completed at this point.
Evan, a lot of new poles are going to be going up. I mean, you know, the detail that you've provided is very helpful. Does the bid include removing old signage and old poles?
Yep.
So we don't end up with this mishmash?
Correct.
Of old and new.
Yeah, and the whole goal from the project is not just to install new poles as well that might be more visually attractive, but also to remove existing and replace as many signs as we can, to sort of consolidate signage. We have also stipulated or conveyed to the contractor that we would like any poles that are removed to be turned over to the city. That way, in case we need to use them in the future, we have them. So we'll kind of use our discretion to say, yeah, we want to keep that, or no, you can just discard of it.
I had asked this question at some point in the process, and just want to see where it ended up in the final bids, but most of the modern wayfinding signage includes some sort of mobile application and digital displays, RFID, you know, QR codes, or some other technology that incorporates, you know, the use of mobile apps, et cetera, where signage have these capabilities or have, you know, be able to add these capabilities easily. So can you talk us through that a little bit?
Sure. I would say certainly QR codes, if we were to go that route, could be added separately. It would just be a process of, you know, putting together that QR code and some sort of sticker and adhesive that could be put on the sign. But for the most part, the content itself has been finalized at this point. And then anything, if we were to do sort of QR codes or something like that, we could certainly add to it in the future.
Is that in the plans? Is that something you're going to, you will be...
Currently not. It's not in the plans right now, but it could be something that we explore.
Is the additional stock actual signs, they're not blank signs that could be used later, they're actual extras of what's out there already?
They are just essentially aluminum poles. It doesn't have any of the content on it.
It doesn't?
Just because we don't know what we need just yet.
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So they're for future use?
Correct.
And whatever happened with the, with our owning, making sure we own the design? Remember, that came up at a previous meeting?
Yes, and Merge confirmed that we do own the, any design that they had put together.
So then we could, if we wanted more printed for something two years from now, we would not have to go to Merge, we would not have to go to Hilton.
Correct. And they've even given us some design renderings of existing city regulatory signs that we have, but following the colors, font that they've used. So they've kind of gone a step extra in terms of providing us with designs for other signs we might want to consider in the future.
So does that mean that our shop here, on a small scale, could replicate if a sign gets broken, or a car goes through it, or...
I don't think so. I think that would be something that we'd have to work with the contractor to figure out if we could have some sort of, you know, understanding as if we do need to purchase additional signs in the future, or have them done, you know, working with them or a different vendor.
A totally different question. You know, you're probably closest to this project of anyone in this room right now. How do you answer the criticism? Some of us have heard some critique from our neighbors about why are we spending any amount of money on signage in this day and age when everyone can go onto their smartphone and find everything?
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Well, I mean, working with the parking department this past summer, implementing the new parking technology for the city, I would kind of argue that the information's out there and available on the city website, but not everybody looks at that information, not everybody takes the time to research that information, especially visitors. So the signage is something that I have heard not only from various committees from the city, but also from the public as well, interacting with them on the street, doing parking enforcement. Signage has been a big thing that has come up. And I know it's been mentioned from the committees as well in terms of trying to direct traffic off of Rehoboth Avenue over to the side streets. That's a component of this project, pedestrian signage too. So it's not just vehicular and parking, but it's also pedestrian signage as well. We have a lot of signs out there. They're not as visible, they're not as attractive. So I think the goal of this program was to try and increase the flow of traffic, increase just the understanding of, you know, different amenities and services that are provided, you know, to pedestrians, vehicles, whatever it might be. And then overall, I think it's a great project because it's going to eventually to be tying into signage that is planned for the Route 1 corridor as well between Lewis and Rehoboth Beach, hoping in the future that that project will see it through. Merge has been working, I think it's been mentioned before, with the city of Lewis, Delaware Tourism to provide a signage program along Route 1 in between Lewis and Rehoboth, and then ultimately with Rehoboth as well. So I think it'll tie in nicely with Route 1 and the other communities as well.
Yeah, you know, Dick, and if I could say, from what Evan said, from Southern Delaware Tourism, what they're trying to do is bring it together so that all the communities are kind of connected in one fashion or another. I think we're just a little bit out front of the other smaller communities. And I think, you know, one of the things too is, over the years, people have been asking, because there's signs everywhere, as you know, in town. And I think sometimes they were just added without any kind of real plan. And what this does, in my mind, is kind of takes everything down and then puts up the things that are recommended. And so, you know, I think combined with the brand-new signs, nice logos, directions, you know, our website is already set up in a very positive fashion if people use it, but I think there's going to be an education process to say, hey, you know, make sure you use the website, hear the signs. And I think in the long run, it'll be very positive for people moving around town, whether residents or visitors.
Oh, I fully agree. And I know, you know, we've had these discussions periodically over the last 18, 24 months, but not everyone has been present for them. And so people are still raising kind of the question about the why. Why are we going this direction? And I think it's worth talking about, and we're going to have to continue to talk about it, so people understand why we're doing this.
Well, and I think the other reason, we touched on it, is just the safety aspect. I mean, if people see a big sign that says, "Turn here, no parking here, parking over here," I mean, and see it ahead of time, and it's very visual, you're not stopping and starting and distracted, you know, continuously. So that was a big plus for me for investing in this. The one thing I had also asked in one of the meetings on this when we voted was that we reach out to the Southern Delaware, you know, for the tourism groups, as well as the state, to see if we could get some additional. I'd already gotten some grants for us previously, which was great from the state. Were we able to get any more grants to offset some of these costs as well?
Not at that point. That's something that I can certainly look into. Right now, what we had just received was the grant funding to do the actual design of the project.
Did we, I don't mean to totally put, but do we have, let me say, ask it this way, do we have the opportunity to go back and get additional funding to offset some of these costs?
I think potentially, I think it might be difficult to show a need for it. At this point, it depends on sort of what grants are out there and what the eligibility is. Because we've already set aside funds in the current fiscal year budget, I mean, and the bid has come in under budget, it might be difficult to demonstrate the need, but certainly something I can look into and contact.
It just doesn't seem, since we're on the leading edge of this, that they would want us to do this, do this right, and be able to capitalize across the state from our investment, and therefore, maybe there should be some contribution to our investment. But anyway, thank you.
One of the issues that I had raised early on was about, you know, possibly phasing it in, partly for cost reasons, but also it just seems like, you know, there's going to be change. Eventually, I hope we will have bike lanes throughout the city, and we won't have, we won't have all the bike signage available now. So, I mean, I guess that just gets added when, as needed. But that was one of the reasons why I had originally thought that we should phase it in, but, I mean, the costs have come in below what we set, so, you know.
Anybody else?
Evan, one thing that I don't see in the bid proposal is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the original items from Merge. The parking brochure, which I think was a significant amount, well, I think it was like $15,000 or $20,000, I don't see that included in any of the bids here.
Yes, so I think the initial amount that we had in there, or Merge was budgeting for was $10,000 for the parking brochure. So the city currently prints a parking brochure. Our costs are even less than $10,000 to do those brochures. So in talking with Merge, it didn't make sense to have a fabricator of signage put a bid in on a parking brochure. Essentially, Merge will work with us to design the brochure, and then we would just use our vendor to print the brochures. It's already in the budget, and it was less than, you know, what they were projecting for, so we thought that was the best route to go.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is great. I mean, obviously, I think the examples that Merge put together when they were doing the design phase was pretty neat. And I think as we go through the future and more communities are involved, and Route 1's involved, I think it'll be a nice, you know, way to set up Southern Delaware from a tourism perspective. And, you know, also, I mean, we're a good $40,000 below what Merge had estimated, so I think that's a very good positive as we move forward.
Yeah, we've talked about this for the past several years, so I'm glad to see it come forward. And if there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to approve.
I don't, I think we have to wait until...
We have to wait until the afternoon meeting.
Oh, this is not a voting meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, this is just the discussion, get all the details out.
Got it.
And then the voting on approving the contract would be at this afternoon.
Can the public comment?
Sure, but let me finish with the Commissioners, please. Anybody else? Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Stan Mills, 34 Maryland Avenue. I've spoken before, I don't know the entire inventory of what's being done, but I'm generally supportive overall for it. My only wish would have been to perhaps defer anything on Wilmington, Baltimore, until we could realize a consultant and a streetscape for those streets, so that hopefully everything marries in. I do have a question for Evan, and that's relative to signs. And I'm hoping that they're removed in entirety because of the parking meter posts were cut, were cut off above ground level to leave a tripping hazard. So they put cement in the center and cement around, beveled around the edge, that's still lawn mowers can catch and are still tripping hazards. And now, now they are virtually impossible to remove without taking a backhoe, whereas they could have been pulled up. So that's just maybe a cautionary note, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will mention that that was part of the specifications of the contractor, has to remove the, in entirety.
And replace whatever was on it before, and whether it's sidewalk or whatever. Yes, please.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones.
I'll tell you what, you try over here just a little. Thank you.
Jeff Selman, 506 Jones Lane. I have a question regarding the award of the contract. The post-bid questionnaire indicated several things that Hilton answered. One of them was a couple of questions regarding who they were going to hire to do the work. Anybody can make signs, not anybody can install them. So my question is, will the city have any chance to review who they finally tell you they're going to hire as a subcontractor, so that you make sure that you have the right people installing these?
Yes. Last that we had spoken to Merge and talked about their conversation with Hilton, they were planning to use some, a Delaware-based company that is local. So once we hear from them in terms of who they're planning to use for subcontractor, we'll know and certainly talk with them and make sure that they're qualified.
Thank you, Evan.
Walter Brittingham, 123 Henlopen Avenue. Thank you, Evan, for a nice presentation. Could we have an explanation maybe now, before it comes into the next meeting, what the parameters, where they are, this is going to be done in the city, is it just downtown? What streets? How far out does it go? And do we have an exact idea what every sign that's being proposed is going to look like? Or are they yet to be designed?
I mean, I think what Evan said was, a lot of them are still under design, and the wording is still under.
So right now, what we do have, and if it's not available on the city website, we can make it available, is several documents. One is a design intent document, which shows every single sign, dimensions, content, all of that. And then we also have a locations document, which shows on, I think it's about four different pages, I know it's been provided to you all before, every single signage group and where it's going to be located based on a Google map overlay. And then with that, actually, Kevin and I and a couple members of the various committees had gone out and actually took location photos. So there's a whole document listing, I mean, it shows Kevin and I standing there with the number for the, that correlates with the sign that's proposed for that location. So we can make those documents available.
That would be great. I think people might like to see it.
What's the width of the construction zone? Or does it go to the lake and Henlopen Acres?
I think it goes as north as Deauville Beach, as south as, I want to say, maybe Wilmington Avenue, but then we also have a gateway signage at Silver Lake Bridge. So that's probably the extent of how far we go, south, and then as far west as the Canal Bridge, because there's signage for Visitor Center, Gordon's Pond State Park, so.
And then to the west from there on State Road, as people are coming into...
Yes, correct.
In that little triangle there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's another proposed gateway sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're reminding you that considerable work has been done at Silver Lake Bridge, lines pushed underneath the red light, so if there's a gateway sign coming in from Silver Lake Bridge, extra caution needs to be included there, power lines for the bridge lights and everything else.
Thank you.
And just on that note, the contractors required to do all utility markouts as well, so.
Right. You know, Bob, we have Bob Palmer here, the engineer that did the bid sheet. Anything you want to add from your perspective, your professional experience?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. No, I have nothing further to add. I think Evan did a fine job. The bidders all followed, well, there were a number of bidders that didn't follow the bid instructions, but none of that changed the bid outcome, so...
How many bidders were there, five?
Five. Yeah, there were five bids, and I think we gave out 15 or so bid packets.
And none were local, right?
Yeah.
The closest one was New Jersey.
Yeah.
And this company is in South Carolina.
Right, that's right. There was a certain level of expertise and sign qualifications that Merge put together in their design intent document to ensure that the fabricator had the right tools, was using the right materials, so that you don't end up with signs that fade prematurely, that weather unnecessarily.
Yeah, I think having five out of 15 that you sent it to, that's a pretty good percentage.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Evan, I have one question. Because Mr. Brittingham just talked about location, I just pulled up the, if anyone wants to look, it's the October 7th workshop meeting, has the locations. And I just noticed the northernmost sign is actually on Dodds Lane by the Art League. Is that something that we're...
I'd have to go back to the documents and take a look. It might just be a directional signage to the Rehoboth Art League, but I would just have to go back through the documents.
That one just seems curious to me.
That may be so.
We've always had a sign.
Yeah, there's always been one right by Henlopen on Second or whatever to go into.
We've always had one.
But thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that we put that information on the city website under Current Projects.
Great, Evan, that's great. If there's nothing else, we'll move on, and we'll have the vote this afternoon when we have the other situation. The second item on the discussion is discuss the bid recommendation for construction of the Grove Park Canal Access Project. We have Matt Spong here from Landscape Architecture Services, who controlled the bid site and is the agent for LRCIA on the dock situation.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself at this time.
Okay, hopefully it won't be as long as last time.
That's correct, Mayor. Mr. Spong is here to address the bids that were received and any questions that you might have. Mr. Spong, Landscape Architectural Services, is the representative and did put the bid package together, so he will address you now.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, public. I'm Matt Spong, Principal of Landscape Architectural Services. We advertised for bids on December 6th and December 19th in the News Journal and also in Cape Gazette, I believe it was the December 11th, as required by state contracting regulations. The bids were due, actually, at that meeting, we had five general contractors and about 10 subcontractors. The bids were received on January 8th. We received three general contract bids. They were from Thompson Contracting, was the low bid at $1,254,306, with several add alternates for a little over $11,000, for a total of $12,286. JJDI was the second bidder, base bid $1,370,000, alternates for about 17, for a total of Mumford Miller was bidder number three of the five general contractors. They were at $1,890,000 for the base bid, $12,000 plus $6,000 for the alternates, for a total of just under $2,000, $1,908,000. Our estimate was about $900,000 plus a bid contingency, which is not the same as a construction contingency, and two add alternates for about $1,022,121. As was mentioned, or not mentioned, but it's in this document, the Lewis-Rehoboth Ground Improvement Association is going to cover construction phase services for our firm, as well as our two geotechnical engineers for construction, compaction, backfill, and the vibration monitoring to protect the existing water line. So the total bid estimates with contingency and the professional fees would be $1,433, $5,060. But since the... But since the LRCIA is covering the contract administration engineering that I just described, the base bid would be $1,254,306. And we are recommending a construction contingency of $100,000 for unforeseen conditions. So that would make the total motion of a construction budget of $1,354,306.
Thanks, Matt. Any, Mark, would you like to add anything? Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners and Public. I'm with the Louis Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association. We've been working on this project for about 10 years. And a couple of notes I'd like just so that the public is aware of. We've actually raised over a million dollars to put towards the project. So when you see the price tag of that bid, that's not what is being asked of the city. There has been over a million raised. Those funds have come from a variety of sources. And I'll read through a few of those so you can see the support and the avenues of funding coming in. Some of this is coming from local legislators via either the bond bill or CTF funds. So we have $300,000 coming from Del Dot. Representative Schwartzkopf, $200,000 with the bond bill. $20,000 with CTF funds from Representative Schwartzkopf's help. And Senator Lopez, $100,000. We've also had some donorship, or donors that are local businesses and such. We have $150,000 coming in from Crystal Trust Foundation, which is a grant that by working with the city, last June, the city endorsed the project as a public-private partnership, private being the nonprofit, so that grants could be pursued. And we were able to get a $150,000 grant from Crystal Trust. And I just want to make sure that folks are aware that that is out there as far as the funding that is coming in and such. I know there's some spreadsheets that I'm sure could be shared that show exactly where those funds are coming from and such. The other thing I'd like to discuss or mention is that the Canal Improvement Association is looking at this project as, at this time, when we started the project years ago and Matt from LAS came on board to help with construction estimates and things. We were working from an estimate. And like any project, an estimate is, you know, the best guess you can do. So when the estimate was completed, we were pretty much on point. And obviously, when something goes to bid, prices can go up. There can be, you know, costs of materials, different things that come up. So the cost on the bid, yes, it was higher. And that's where we're looking to work with the city, for the city to help on that portion that's remaining. And that the Canal Improvement Group will continue to fundraise. And a couple of the things we'll be doing are fundraising to contribute, continue to contribute to the project, as well as maintenance and other things that go forth. A few ideas we've discussed, we're looking at raising funds, setting up an endowment. So there's a continual, basically continual funding coming from our organization to that dock project so that it can have some maintenance fees covered on an annual basis and such. And as I mentioned earlier today, speaking with folks at the budget meeting, this is the Canal Improvement Association. So our fundraising isn't stopping because now there is a public access point in Rehoboth Beach. But the canal goes a long way in both directions and we hope to continue to help projects along the way.
Thank you, Mark. And we have Scott Thompson from Southern Delaware, who is also a board member. Just wanted to make sure in case you had anything there. And as we spoke before in the, in the budget meeting, as Mark just mentioned, the Louis Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association has raised through their fundraising activities, talking to the state, Del Dot, Representative Schwartzkopf, Lopez, a number of the different businesses, a total of $1,074,000. And as Matt just mentioned, the bid itself is $1,004,000. So we're in the area of $280,000 deficit at this point in time. And what we're, what we're suggesting and LRCIA is suggesting as well is to get a commitment from the city to move forward on this project. As Matt talked about, the bids were sent out, I believe, in December. They were due January 8th. And one of the stipulations in the bid was to have 60 days for the city to look at the numbers, talk with our consultants and our engineers about it, and then make a decision within that 60 days. And that 60 days is March 8th. And so what we're going to ask at the, the next meeting is for the city's commitment to move forward with this project, with the idea that the city would commit to the $280,000 today, but with the idea that hopefully, and I'm going to ask Matt in a minute about timing, that over the next year or so, as the construction is taking place, that the LRCIA continues to do their fundraising. And hopefully, that number of 280 will diminish pretty substantially. But again, that's something that we hope for over the next year or so. Matt, can you tell me, we signed on the dotted line on March 8th to give them that commitment. What's the timing for construction and so on and so forth? Best-case scenario, I know some of it's been extended a bit.
Right. Well, the original intent was they would start, you know, ASAP was what we had in the addendums and we explained at the pre-bid meeting. So that would have hopefully been, you know, like February. Of course, we're a month behind that now. And then in meeting with the staff at the, prior to the pre-bid meeting, it was decided that the project would have to be done in a couple of phases. Well, not really phases, but that work could not occur basically between June 15th and August 15th because of all the summer traffic and conflict with tourists and the vacationers. So, so that being said, which I'm going to just add something here, that wasn't foreseen in the original construction estimate. So you basically have two mobilization charges. And in this case, they have to have a 70-foot-long hydraulic excavator. So that's required to come on the highway, which is a special permit. So that costs thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to do that. And also, at the 11th hour in November, was decided to put a fire suppression system in, which is not normally done on a dock that does not have fuel or has less than 10 slips. And that's National Fire Code. But the local fire company wanted that and that's, that's fine. But those are two unforeseen things that account for almost $100,000. And just another thing, just show that we've done our due diligence. This is happening throughout the state in the last three months. There's a project in Wilmington that's been going on for about 10 years. Rodney Square, which is a Del Dot, City Wilmington project, came in 20% above. There's a big drainage project in Sussex County. I was just at a meeting down there for a project we're doing in Seaford. Not our project, came in 30% above. With the low unemployment and good economy for 10 years, we're seeing prices now, they're equal to like they were in 2006. They're just going through the roof.
And with that in mind, if we were to start and then hold off June through August, what kind of timeframe do you see the final, final?
They're estimating about a year.
Okay. So about a year from whenever they start?
Right. If we give them, or the city in this case, gives them the notice to proceed, yeah, they can start getting their bonds and all those kind of things and ordering materials. And, you know, they, even though it's getting close to May, when they also have to stop for another week for Memorial Day, they will be able to get some work done. So, you know, it would be advantageous. And plus, the other thing that I think's been discussed with the staff and may not be clear to everybody, work can occur on the canal where it won't be interfering with traffic, because a lot of this work is going to be done from a barge at the bottom of the canal. And there's no restrictions from Denrick or the Army Corps of Engineers as long as they're not in the canal accessway for boating. So some of that work can continue at that time.
And you've been helpful with the LRCIA, getting grants, whatever. Some of that money is going to run out pretty soon, as far as a timing perspective.
Right. The, about $100,000 from Denrick's, what's called Outdoor Recreation Parks and Trails is basically for a year. You know, you can't ask for extension, but they don't like to do that because they'd rather have you spend it, because they want to give it to somebody else if it's not spent. And then we have a.
But you can, you can ask for an extension? You can?
Can, but they prefer that you don't.
When does that one expire?
In June.
In June, right.
But we could also ask for another grant to help bring up some of the deficit.
Right.
Yeah. And that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, additional grant. Every year in June, there's available. And the amounts vary from year to year because it's based on investments that the ORPT has.
That's given here is $44,000.
Excuse me?
That's given here is $44,000, the outdoor recreation parks and trails.
Well, that's, that's the match.
Okay.
It's a 50/50. And we're using other grant money like the transportation enhancement funds. That's, one reason the Del Dot wants is because of the fact that this is a good thing to take some traffic off the road. And that was a $300,000 grant.
And so with that in mind, Matt, since we're not going to be done by June, I would assume that you'd probably be applying for another grant?
Yes.
If the possibility is there, in addition to whatever the other fundraising that LRCIA is going to be doing. Mark, you had something?
Just to expound a little bit on that. So for the funding side, the ORPT grant that was mentioned, when that fund came in, that was a direct, that directly occurred because the city and the nonprofit partnered up to go forward. The nonprofit could not go for that on their own. The city could possibly go for that if they had a project that possibly, you know, was in their, in that wheelhouse. So that came from the relationship. And that is also a grant, as Matt mentioned, that could be applied for again. And a lot of times, when a project's in, Denrick sees that and says, oh, we'd like to continue that because this project's got legs and it's moving and such. So, and as Matt was talking, the $44,000 that's shown on the balance, just to clarify. So $92,000 came in. Funds had to be utilized for construction documents and, you know, permitting and different things to get to a point where we could say, yes, this is definitely able to happen. And so funds, that was approved with Denrick, I believe, to, you know, to allow those things to occur. Some of the funds that would go away, though, the, the bond bill and CTFs and some things, some of these funds will expire in June. That's why it's very timely to look at the project through those eyes where a project that's, you know, a million, 280, and you have a million dollars that is getting handed to the project, that if it goes, the project doesn't move forward, those funds will go away. The $150,000 from the foundation, foundations talk to each other. They're probably not going to go back and get funds from that foundation again, or the other two foundations that have offices in the same facility kind of thing. The same with some of the funds from, the donors have, as far as different business donors in the area have asked, you know, they want to help and contribute, but they want to make sure the project is going forward. Result of that, in the last week, we had a $100,000 contribution about two weeks ago come in to this project because they were like, wow, this is really occurring. So there's, there's a momentum going that if this project was put on hold and bid at a later date or such, you would almost be resetting the clock, starting back. And then who knows what prices of materials and other costs could be a year from now or something like that. So that's, that's our position as an organization on this. And it really comes down to, there's a lot of energy. There's, we've gotten through the organization, we've had a lot of support. We have some surveys that we've done, folks talking about the project and such. And we really, truly, genuinely feel that we'll see more support for the project because now folks that can contribute perhaps a little bit are more inclined because they can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
I just have a question about the, and I don't know, maybe both of you or either of you could answer the question. So when we're talking about the funds expiring, in essence, is it based on obligation date of the funds? So like if the contract is awarded before, or on or before March 8th, and the funds don't expire, have to be returned if they're unused by June, is that to trigger or do the funds actually have to be expended?
The, my understanding is the bid would need to be awarded.
Okay.
So that the funds could be spent. So the $300,000 from Del Dot, we were actually, last year, we were able to acquire that. And through working with them and establishing a good relationship, they were like, these funds you could hold on to a little bit because you're just at the point where, when you have a construction-ready project, shovel-ready, these funds can go to it. But after this year, those funds maybe get, you know, shifted somewhere else.
Right. But once they're obligated, then that's a bona fide commitment of those funds.
Yes.
And based on comments you made at the budget meeting this morning, it's just human nature that if potential investors see that a project is actually beginning, they can come across the bridge, they can see that the contractors there are actually beginning work, that they may be more inclined to say, okay, the city's behind this. You know, your nonprofit association, LRCIA, has done a great job of getting us to this point. And they would be more likely to come on board if they were inclined to do so based on that activity. And delays, like you just mentioned, would most likely cause people to, to ask more questions and maybe disinclined to invest.
Yes, I would agree with that. The, you know, when folks see, when we, we've had a lot of discussions, a lot of potential donors, contributors in the area, and a lot of them are just waiting for that shovel to go on the ground, essentially.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions?
Well, we had a very extensive discussion this morning and most people in the room can't benefit from it because they weren't here. Almost feel like we should roll the tape or something, so we don't have to. Because Steve gave a very nice introduction. Mayor, you gave a really, you know, good detailed history of this, going back, you know, 20 years. But where it comes out, what we have to vote on, is the budget. And so just as a way of summarizing where we are, which has nothing to do with the quality of the project. I mean, the LRCIA has done a fantastic job of fundraising. They're on a roll, you know, they've gotten $130,000 just in the last couple of weeks, which suggests that it wouldn't take much longer for them to actually raise the money. But the things that troubled me this morning still trouble me and that is that throughout this entire process, going back to 2011, every vote that has ever been taken on it is with a specific provision that the city will not contribute to the funding of its, of its construction. And that, and yet, it's a very important public-private partnership because the public partnership comes from later. It comes in maintaining it, you know, for 40 years and in, and, you know, getting it potentially dredged and all the other costs that go in with maintaining it once it becomes an asset of the city. So the, you know, million, 1.3 million or whatever that cost to construct it was never supposed to be a city obligation. Where we are in terms of timing is that this morning, well, first of all, 6 o'clock Wednesday night, we received the paperwork that is here in front of us with all of the costs, the funding sources and everything. 6 o'clock Wednesday night. Yet we came into a 10 o'clock budget meeting this morning. We went over the entire capital budget here, which had been revised since the last meeting, capital budget of over $5 million. And it was all done. We were making great progress. And, and then in the last 30 minutes of the meeting, this was sprung on us. And after considerable discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, what, the position we're in is we're going to have to take something out of our budget for next year in order to fund this $280,000 if we are to award the contract now. Not only, and there's dozens of priorities on this list, and many of them are urgent and essential. In addition to that, we are three years into a five-year capital improvement program. This project has never been anywhere in any of these documents, nowhere, because it wasn't the intention for us to be in the position we're in. So, and, and we had some excellent comments from the public this morning to basically say, I mean, a number of possibilities were raised and they're not ideal by any means. Some of them were. of them were, could we phase it in? You know, perhaps not. Could we do a smaller project? Could we say, to the, and it might have to go out for a rebid, I get that. But could it be, you know, do we have X dollars to spend, what can we get for X dollars? I mean, that's where we are unless we want to not do the LED lights throughout the city, or not do a stormwater project, or not do some other critical infrastructure. And I'm really struggling with being able to find the funds to make this happen, given that we're really not supposed to be in this position.
I would just like to clarify a couple of things, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Gay. We recognize that it's not always a perfect world, and especially with construction projects. And I think what Mr. Spong indicated is that what we've experienced with our bid opening process is not atypical at this time and in this area, where the bid prices exceed what very good cost estimates have indicated what the cost should be. Another part of the meeting that we had this morning talked about, you know, what do we do to come up with whatever the, maintaining the balanced budget approach that the city manager has steadfastly done while trying to identify where there may not be, where there's funding for projects that aren't necessarily as critical. And she has agreed to do that. And so she will be reporting back to us at the next budget meeting on March 10th. But we really, because of the fact that the expiration date of the bid that we received from the low bidder expires on the 8th of March, we don't necessarily have the luxury of that timing. And so I think what we need to consider is showing the commitment that the city has to this very important project that's been in the works for over 10 years, it's been identified multiple times in the 2010 Comprehensive Development Plan, and the feedback that the LRCIA has received has been mainly positive. And there's already evidence in Lewis that similar-type facilities that they have do generate a lot of interest in kayaking and paddle boating and things of that nature, which are things that I think we would like to attract here. And so I think the intent is that while we may need to obligate the $280,000 so that we can initiate the project, we know that there's ongoing, very rigorous efforts to find a way to reduce what that 280,000 will ultimately be to the city. And yeah, I'm a glass three-quarters-full type of person, so I'm not the best person to be a naysayer, but I fully believe that we're going to find a lot of that money to offset that 280K expenditure before the funds have to be expended. And what we're talking about is just making the commitment of the funds. Any dollar that comes in to offset that will reduce the actual expenditure that the city will have to make.
Thank you, Commissioner Schefter.
I have one quick question.
If I can say one thing to go on, Commissioner Gaze, from a historic perspective, there was never a vote taken to go forward with this project until about a year or two ago.
Last July.
Yeah. Basically, and the information I know, because I used to be part of this board when I was not a commissioner, and back in 2011, I think the board came to the city and asked for their city basically to say, okay, look, we're going to try to fund this, but we need the city to go on the top of these grants. City said, no thanks. And then I think there was another vote, two or three years later, that the board came back and said, look, you know, we got a lot of interest, the economy's a little bit more positive, so on and so forth, nope.
That one did go through, if you're thinking of the design one in 2013, four to three.
Design, exactly. But basically, the city always saying, well, you know, we don't know if something's going to happen as we move forward. And then, you know, last year, 18, whatever the months ago it was, the commissioners said, yes, we're very supportive of this project, let's move forward. I don't know that there was a specific portion of the bid that said, or excuse me, of the vote that said, hey, however, the city doesn't want to pay for anything, or the city won't pay for anything. I think that was always the thought that, you know, if LRCIA can raise the money, that's great, because this is going to be an amenity that they're not going to own at the end of the day, we are. And the way I look at this, and I think Commissioner Schefter kind of mentioned it, or Mark mentioned it, this is a project, a 1.4 million dollar project, and basically, there's 1.1 million in the bank, free money, that will be given to us to pay for this. And basically, what we're asking is to be able to provide the commitment on March 8th at the end of the 60 days that we allowed to move forward on this project, with the idea that everybody's going to work towards, hopefully, LRCIA raising as much of that 280 as possible. But we can't move forward until the city's commitment's there. And I agree with what Mark said. In my, you know, little bit of activity in fundraising, a lot of people like to see the commitment from, in this case, the city. Because for the longest time, I know a number of these people have been saying, yeah, you know, I'll support it, but the city's got to be behind it. And, you know, specifically, that $100,000 that came in a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with the gentleman, and he's like, you know, Paul, it looks like you guys are going to be able to do this, count me in, count me in. And all of a sudden, it was $100,000. So, you know, my feeling is, it's, we are basically, we have a situation here where we're, it's free, at least 85,000, excuse me, 85% of it is on board already, and the hope is to continue to raise funds. But we're in a time crunch, and, you know, that's where we are.
Can we get, can we, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for that additional information. Can we get an extension on the contract bid right now so, to allow the nonprofit to raise more money? They were really successful in raising money in a very short time. So is it possible to get an extension to give them another week or two, or whatever the case may be, to lower that deficit right now?
Can I say something before, Matt? It's not really a short time, because this has been out there for 10 years. I mean, once we were getting closer in the last year or so, we'd been able to raise the money because the commissioners said a year or so ago-
No, no, I understand that.
We're moving forward.
I heard in the meeting this morning that when we found there was going to be a shortfall, we raised 130K or something in a very short period of time, right? Is that correct?
Weeks.
Within weeks, right? That's all I'm talking about, that amount of money. So if that took two weeks, in four weeks, we should be able to cover this.
And-
If we had an extension.
To look at that, so I'll put this in perspective. I work for a company that is typically on the opposite end, being asked for a lot of things financially across the state. So I speak from experience on this. So as this project has gotten legs, folks are more inclined to support. The 130 that we raised, 100 of that is from one company. So that, to put it in perspective, a large percentage is asked from one company. Representative Schwartzgoff said, I believe in this project, I can find you another 20,000. I think he would have done more if he could, but he did what he could. And then we've had two other entities at a smaller level put in 2,500 apiece, and we're getting kind of a ripple effect. And that's, I'm confident we can raise funds. I think putting it on the organizations, say, hey, we got you a two-week extension on a bid, because we have to think of a contractor that has, you know, a timeline for materials, for construction, et cetera, and he might say, I just got three other bids that are, I'm going to go with somewhere else because I can lose this business because I've given you 60 days. I think that has to be placed into the overall consideration. We're not going to lighten up on our end, I can assure that, and we're going to continue to raise as much as we possibly can. And for the long haul of it, we're looking at raising funds to continue to help with the maintenance costs if this comes to fruition and is, you know, a finished product. And we've talked about looking at ways to raise funds and establish an endowment that would allow that to continue on as well. So we will do our absolute best, that I can assure, but I can't predict and see into the future for two weeks.
Your efforts are admirable, Mark, I really appreciate that. You know, I'm, I don't have any problem with what the LRCIA is doing, I have a problem with our process, because these bids were open January 8th, and I got this paperwork two days ago, and it came up in the, after the entire budget discussion on February 21st with a deadline of March 8th. There's something wrong there. There's just something wrong there.
Anybody else?
I have a question for Mark. On the funding source, you have a lot of sort of the big-ticket bond bills and some government funding from Denrick and whatnot, and some large companies that are donating. My understanding is you've been out just trying to get 100 bucks, 250 bucks, 500 bucks from individuals. I don't see sort of other or miscellaneous funds captured here anyways.
So we have been doing that, and actually for several years. So we've actually, as a nonprofit, we have to pay for certain things, our post office, you know, getting case studies done to take to the donors and such. So we have some funds that we have to maintain in our account. Over the years, we've raised approximately 18,000 that are, I would say, smaller-level donations, 100, $50, $25. You know, 5,000 or less, I would say, would fall under that. So that we didn't note in this big pool because as a, you know, a nonprofit is a business, we have to have some money in the bank to continue trying to raise funds.
Can you tell us how much you have in your operating account at the moment?
Well, considering that at the moment, I can, we have, a lot of the funds there are coming into the nonprofit. So like Crystal Trust, the 150,000 is set in our account, waiting to be transferred over to the city, because that's dedicated to that project.
Okay, I meant non-dedicated to this project funds.
Oh, it's, I would say it's probably around 10,000 to 15,000 currently, because we've been getting materials for, we've done donation envelopes and case studies and the such, so we're spending some funds on things like that.
I'll just generally make my comments on the project. One, I'm supportive of it 100%, although I've always said, as the project continues, I do want to monitor traffic and parking in that area. I know that's something that a lot of people are concerned about. Otherwise, I am very supportive of the project and look forward to it. Being one of the people that said I would help fundraise and have a fundraiser with friends and business earners, I've not done that yet. Knowing that I, knowing that a lot of other people have planned on doing it, and that's, this is just not the greatest time of year to do it, in the wintertime, I, and what would LRCIA has done already, and upcoming in June, sort of starts fresh, new grant opportunities, I feel very confident that we're going to get to the 280 in private sources. I do not think that the city should be paying very much at all on a project like this when we have a lot of other very important infrastructure capital improvement plans. With that said, I do think that we're going to get to the 1, or 280 from private funds. What I'm struggling with is this process. We're going to have to amend the budget, take something out, as more money comes in, revise the budget again, and put stuff back in. So I agree with some others that the process, the timing, I'm not thrilled with. I think it's an important project, I'd hate to see us lose money because we're not taking advantage of it before June 1st, so it's a bit of a struggle.
And there's a couple key things with this. Yes, the, some of the bond, or the grant money may have a one-year expiration date. But what I heard Mr. Spong indicate is that the fact that we're, we're just here, I mean, the ideal situation is that this contract would have been awarded in, earlier this month, and that the contractor would have been able to start staging and ordering supplies and arranging for the equipment, getting the permits and those types of things. So every day that we delay could equate to a factor of whatever in increased cost in delays in completing the project. And I'm not an advocate for just spending money that I don't have. I don't do it personally, and I don't expect the city to do it. But I also recognize that there's been so much investment in this, and I have more problems saying, we're going to say no to 1.1 million dollars that is coming from the public to support a project where the asset's going to be owned by the city, and just taking a very shortsighted approach to, and I could be wrong, and I deserve to be, you know, marched out in public and embarrassed. But the thing is, I agree with Edward, I agree with what Mark has said. We have smart people who are working hard to raise the money to do this. They're not going to stop, they're going to keep going. And I know myself, I would be more inclined to invest in something where I saw real work being done and see the benefits of that, because then I know what's going to happen, and I'm not just giving my money to somebody who's going to skip town. And so I just think that it's a hard decision to make, but I'm fully willing to vote, to take that risk and press on with the contract and continue to work with the folks to raise funds.
City Manager, do we have some sort of partnership agreement with the nonprofit organization?
Well, we've committed, yes. I'd say that we do have a partnership. The city signed, and it will accept the bid on behalf of LRCIA, so I'd say that we do. We've committed funding from the ORPT grant to pay already some of the expenses that have come in from Mr. Spong, so yes, we have a partnership.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there a mechanism to put some strings on this commitment?
Are you saying so that we sure we get the money that they raise?
Or there's some incentive for them to continue to fundraise? And I guess one concern I do have, and I really don't think this is a problem, and I do think that they'll raise the 280, but what I, wouldn't want to see happen is that we commit the money, and then some businesses and other organizations are like, oh, the city's already funding it, why are we going to, why are we going to put more into it? That is my fear, so I would like there to be some strings attached and put the nonprofit organization on the, you know.
Edward, it's also the way that we talk about it, it's the way that we communicate our actions as we go forward. It's the way we talk to the Gazette and to the Rhode Beach Homeowners Association and all of our neighbors in terms of what we're doing, and I think that's, that's critical.
Yeah, no, communication and the PR aspect of this is critical, but if we're going to make the commitment, I want it to be with the, with the understanding that we're, we're doing this with the intention that they're going to raise the rest of the money within this year.
I fully agree.
And we're just making a commitment.
I fully agree, it's just that often we take action and then we don't communicate, we leave it to happenstance, or our good friend out there with the Gazette to figure out how to, to write about it. And I think we need to be more proactive.
So I think my question was just, is there a mechanism where we can put some language into an agreement that, that just solidifies what our intentions are? And the other thing is, City Manager, I think I'd ask for your recommendation as Sharon sort of leads the budget process and comes to us first with recommendations, where she sees us falling in to it.
Actually, a couple, I just remembered something that hadn't, and that is that there is an additional 79,000, I think, that they, you have to raise?
Yeah, we're taking care of it.
Right, but you have to raise that, you don't have it now, right? That we're not responsible for covering, it's a direct link between LRCIA and Matt Spong, but they have to raise that too. So they don't just have to raise the 280 for us, if anything, they have a direct obligation, so their direct obligation may come first, just throwing it out there, that's an additional 79,000. But the one question I had in terms of timing, I, you know, so we're going to act on this not knowing what we have to take out of our budget for next year, because that meeting will not take place until March 10th. I guess I'm wondering, could we have a special meeting, another one, between now and March 8th, where we know for sure, and we can tell the public what we're not doing this year because of this situation? So after the budget meeting, I discussed briefly-
So, after the budget meeting, I discussed briefly, because there wasn't time, with the finance director. And I think instead of taking money away from the CIP and taking money out of the CIP, we could review the budget again. Again, it's a fluid budget and look at the revenue sources that we have in place. We are very conservative, as you know, and in, you know, somehow reviewing those revenue sources and maybe add additional revenue from parking perhaps. You know, we've, we have a new hotel tax that we very, very, very conservatively budgeted. So, in looking at that, looking at the 96,000 that was brought up in the budget summary, I feel pretty confident that we can look at that funding and adjust the budget for your March 10th meeting to not take anything from the CIP.
From the one presented today.
Correct.
The version presented today.
Correct.
That's very encouraging.
That is.
I haven't said a lot here on this topic because we talked a lot this morning and Steve and Edward and the mayor have spoken eloquently about it. I'm certainly supportive of this moving ahead. I did say this morning, and I mean this genuinely, and I live on the end of town, that, with the canal in my backyard, and anything we can do over there that, to enhance that neighborhood, I think is an incredible asset for our entire community. And there will be a ripple effect, I think economically, both in terms of property values, in terms of this being the destination people want to come and, and spend money. The fact that external sources have given us over $1.1 million speaks volumes to me. And that alone says that we should go forward with this. I've talked with Mark both privately, publicly. I've been at fundraising events that he and the, and the foundation run. They're professional, they're good at it. It's given me every confidence in the world that they will raise the 280,000 plus dollars in the bank for, for management after the construction is done. So, I, I feel very, very confident going forward with this.
And Commissioner Byrne, I just want to applaud you for what you said because you said it better than I could, but...
No, just a few last words.
But, but, yes. Well said. But we, I just believe that, you know, we need to look at what we want the future of the city to be. And I think that there's a growing interest in having an asset like this within our town to allow families to enjoy the canal, to allow transportation that isn't on coastal highway to happen between Lewis and Rehoboth Beach and back. And I just encourage us all to take a, to say, how committed are we to that, that future that, that could bring joy and a lot of enrichment to people's lives? So, I think when somebody comes up with 1.1 million and we're asked to, to promise just to support without having to open up the wallet right now for 280,000 is something that we need to strongly consider.
So, I want to just reiterate that three things you, you also eloquently already said this, but, but I want to summarize a few things. One, this is a commitment, not an actual expenditure at this point. And we do anticipate that the nonprofit will raise that, that 280 over time. Number two, this morning, we talked about CIP that I think, I think, and I'm just open to suggestions, I feel like this, both the city as well as the commissioners were generally comfortable that those investments were addressing the critical infrastructure projects that we have right now. So, nothing's being taken out of those critical projects to fund this. Am I correct, city manager, in general, from your perspective?
As of right now?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, I would not look to do that. I would, you know, look, and it's not a manipulation of the budget. I wouldn't say that unless I was confident that we are very conservative.
Right.
And we could look at the revenue sources and adjust them accordingly.
I think that's great. And number three, I would like somebody to address, whether it's Glenn or Sharon or whoever, Edward's question, is there a way to put in an agreement what the intent is? I'm not sure we, I didn't hear any answer to that or at least some spec, some, you know, discussion about that question.
I mean, sure, I mean, they're a, they're a nonprofit, they're able to enter into a contractual arrangement, but I don't see this as a, as we said, it's a, it's a commitment. It's not an obligation on either part at this point. So, you could do sort of a memorandum of understanding that would set out the expectations of each party. It certainly wouldn't be in the form of a promissory note or something like that where one is promising to pay. So, but certainly you could do a memorandum of understanding that would clarify the expectations of the parties.
And could that be broader than just the, the finance? I mean, could, could that include a number of other logistical issues?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Solicitor, do we generally not enter in the MOUs when we're in a partnership like this?
You can. They're not, they're not uncommon. You know, truthfully, Commissioner, there's not a lot of public-private partnerships that are happening right now with the city of this magnitude. So, you know, but, but this is probably at an appropriate level to consider that sort of an arrangement.
I guess I was just surprised, which is why I asked if there was an agreement or an MOU already in place earlier. I guess I'm surprised there isn't.
I guess partly that's because this is, you know, this is the first time where funding is now getting really down to the, down to the end and we're trying to figure out how the project goes forward. So, if that's something you want to pursue, it's something we certainly can.
I don't think it's a bad thing. Other, other than that, I mean, I'd like to hear more from the public about it.
Yeah, definitely.
I've got a question for Matt before we move that direction. You referenced the bids that came in. What, what do you, what do, kind of, we generally know about Thompson and Sons Contracting and their experience in this area and so?
They have a very good reputation. We worked with them in Milford on a park restroom and utility project. And I also checked them out with, they do work with EDIS, which is one of the biggest construction managers in the state. And they do work with 7-Eleven, not 7-Eleven, Wawa. Yeah, Wawa, 7-Eleven's hardly around anymore. And they do numerous schools, they do work for Delta. They're bidding on a huge job with Delta, which makes me a little nervous because we don't get them debt now. They're actively pursuing other projects.
Right, right.
Missed the boat, so it's...
Where's their home company located?
Milford. And 90% of the subcontractors are from Delaware.
That's great.
Yes.
Good. Thanks, Matt.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to say something? Please, if you can come over here. And if you could say your name and address, please.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Jeffrey Good at One Grove Street. I have, I'm against this project, I'll say that right out front, and I'm going to cite three reasons for my reluctance to go ahead with this. Some of them won't be too popular here, but it needs to be said. Firstly, I agree 100% with Commissioner Gay and mostly Commissioner Gay, no one else seems to be that concerned, that we don't have the money. We have $60 million in debt at least, probably more. We just have a 50% tax rate. I don't think this is the time to have discretionary spending, no matter how much money the companies donate to Rehoboth to help this project. So, I won't go on too much with that, but basically, we have so many issues, safety issues, stormwater issues, tax issues. This is not the time for major new projects that will either cost us money upfront, the 280,000, or in maintenance, dredging, whatever it would take. That's the first thing. The second reason I'm against this proposal is, let's look at Grove Park itself. I think what's going on in Grove Park, I wouldn't use the word tragic, but it's really unfortunate. It's a beautiful park, beautiful old trees, there's not a blade of grass, it's completely trampled upon during the summer due to the farmer's market. It's a small park, it's going to have many, many, if this is a successful project, it'll have many, many more tourists. It's not going to be a very nice-looking park. It's some of the, I'm not a tree specialist, but the trees don't look too healthy to me. So, Grove Park does not need this increased traffic, this increased business. It's a nice park for the residents and of course tourists, but I, it seems that doesn't matter what's, what residents might want here. But it's, it's a nice park and it's going to be destroyed even further. The third issue I wanted to mention, which goes along with what I just said about Grove Park, is that the circle area, the entrance to Rehoboth, is becoming similar to what Staten Island is to Manhattan and what New Jersey is to Manhattan, for those of us who are familiar with New York. All the projects that nobody wants near their house, you don't want these things, thousands of tourists right going through your lawn, parking in your driveway. Nobody on this commi, on this commission wants that, but the people who live there, okay, you can have it.
Sure. Bring it to Lake Avenue.
The people who live there don't want it. I don't know if you ever asked us. You have to be there to watch it, to see cars parked on your lawn and in your driveway and walking all over your lawn. It's a horror and you guys are making it worse. So, that's sort of, I don't know, that's sort of harms, you say, someone mentioned the property values would go up. I think they'll go way down. And secondly, I think that you're helping to destroy the quiet enjoyment of your own property here. Maybe long ago, maybe about five years ago, that area of Rehoboth was all commercial and there wasn't that much residents who lived there, but now there's a lot of new homes, including mine, there's a lot of residents. It's not the dumping ground anymore it used to be and that's what you guys are treating it with clearer space, with this, every, every project you think of.
Okay.
You shove it right, I'm not okay. You shove it right in my throat and you do it to everyone who lives there and you don't give a damn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had your time. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Please. Got to raise your hand, buddy.
Hello, my name is Lisa Train. I'm at 64 Henlopen. And Edward, I don't want to butcher your last name, I can't see it that far, but my question's directed to you. In your statement about, your argument about this project, which I'm still sitting on the fence for, you said you're going to monitor traffic and parking. Can you please expand on that when traffic is now a gridlock and you literally have to say your prayer as you're driving into town to find a parking space? So, when you mentioned you're going to monitor traffic, what do you, what do you mean by that? And if you find a result from that, how are you going to try to resolve that?
Should I, should I respond? My only comment was, I, a lot of people that were against the project live in the area and parking and traffic was their concern. And I don't want to ignore those concerns that as this project continues, I don't think we know what the outcome will be with traffic or parking, but I want to keep an eye on it and if adjustments need to be made, we make them.
Okay. In your personal opinion right now, how do you find the parking and traffic situation right now during the months of July and August? And all of you can chime in. Is it good? Is it bad? Is it horrific?
You know, I'll chime in.
Is it getting worse? I don't know. I mean, because I park it and I walk.
Yeah, we're getting a little off track.
No, no, because it has to deal with this project.
Yeah, but just from one perspective, is it crowded in Rehoboth? Sure.
I'm not asking about the crowds, I'm asking about the traffic and the parking.
The traffic. Can the traffic be better? That would be great, but we've only got a certain amount of streets, certain amount of parking spaces. And, you know, our hope is it continues to flow the way it is, maybe gets better, but we have...
Or maybe it can get worse, correct?
I don't know that it can get worse.
Right, because cars can't turn around and move anymore.
Well, and, and that's great. I mean, we could basically close the bridge and only let residents in, but what a lot of people need to know is...
Wait, hold on. You're introducing something. How can you close a public street that belongs to the public? So, does that mean now that the residents of Rehoboth will buy the streets? I mean, make things that make sense.
All right. I'm getting off track and I apologize. I mean, basically, the traffic, will this cause more traffic? I doubt it. It'll just continue the way it is. Maybe Grove Parking Lot will fill up a little bit more.
Grove Park is already filled up to max.
Well, in the summer, unfortunately, some people park there and go to the beach.
Then how are you going to resolve that situation?
That's an enforcement situation. But, I mean, Grove Park, unlike this gentleman, I think is a great park. I, I go there a lot because I'm at one of the buildings there, but the children playing, people drive in, whether it's visitors or residents, and I think it's a great amenity. I think this is a great addition to that amenity. Will, will traffic ever get better than it is today or less traffic? Probably not. Will there ever be more parking spaces? There's plenty of parking spaces if people live, look for them. But, you know, I think Rehoboth, I mean, for those two months that you mentioned, man, it's pretty crowded. But you know what? For the other eight to 10 months, it's spectacular.
Right, but a lot can happen in those two months of July and August that can be hazardous to somebody's life, somebody's health and somebody's well-being. And it just seems like all these are great ideas, the signs. Maybe dozens of tourists get lost in Rehoboth Beach and cannot find Gordon Pond. I don't know. Maybe they don't know where Nicole's Pizza is. Today, for the, and I hadn't seen them and I'm not even sure when they were constructed, today there are signs that say, beautiful Baltimore Avenue, restaurants and shops. I had to stand four feet away to read that sign.
And that's why we're doing the wayfinding situation is to address that.
You know, I'm just like, so, I sat here this morning and this afternoon, all these ideas are great. Would I love, personally, would I love to see a barge between Rehoboth and Lewis? Absolutely, because it's, the scenery is spectacular. Number one, to get down there, we're having an eight, if we're going to think about the residents, my mother's 83, she can't make those stairs. How are you going to accommodate?
There are no stairs. It's all ADA compliant.
There's no stairs? Okay, then I'll take that. Okay, thank you very much. So, she would be thrilled to get on a flat-bottom boat. But, we're adding these ideas that are going to create further problems to the city and we have so many problems that have to be resolved. The storm issues, the parking. Before we add something on, we have to fix something and get a solid foundation so we continue to grow forward. I'm not saying no. Yes, we have a huge coupon of $1.1 million sitting on the table, but we have floods happening because pipes are bursting underground right now that need somebody's immediate attention. And all it is, is let a sewer pipe flow and you have a massive hazard which can easily happen. And I don't hear that being addressed. People want to kayak. Well, people are coming to this town, July and August, without kayaking and they're perfectly fine.
You've been about six minutes, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. So, delete the past four, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your time. Charlie, thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Garlo, 82 Sussex Street, about two or three blocks away from this effort and I think it's a wonderful idea. My kayak is in my garage gathering dust right now, getting ready to get out there on the canal and improve my health. I know I'm in pretty good shape already, but it'll certainly help my health and improve the health of lots of people who get out there on the canal and enjoy that area. The park, in my opinion, is underutilized already. There's some playground equipment there, but it's never, in my opinion, I'm over there a lot because I'm close with my dogs who take a walk and there's plenty of space for more activity. I welcome more activity, more people having fun in our wonderful city and it's just so, I'm just so grateful to see a small-town democracy working so well here by allowing us this opportunity to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, one, two, four, okay.
Jeff Salman, 506 Jones.
Jeff Salmon, 506 Jones Lane, a block and a half from Grove. I strongly support this idea, I've been waiting for years for this, thinking it can only improve the whole traffic situation. If you think about it, people are sitting in Lewis deciding, do we wanna go down to Rehoboth for the day? Let's jump on a water taxi. I know it'll, I'll use it to drive to Lewis to go, or instead of driving to Lewis, to take this, a water taxi. There used to be a water taxi that ran from Dewey up to Lewis and they couldn't make it work financially. So get this stop in there, get that back and running, I think it's a good idea and it can only help parking.
Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, thank you. Please.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I don't really have an opinion one way or the other on the park, but my question is, how much is it going to cost to maintain it every year? And how much has the city already put into it? So, and I doubt, you know, I mean, I know it's, from being a fundraiser myself, that it's relatively easy to raise funds, relatively, and I say that, you know, relatively, easy to raise funds for capital, but it's much harder to raise for operating. So I suspect that once it's up and running, it's going to be up to the city to maintain everything. And I'm wondering what budget item and how much that's gonna cost? And I'm just curious, you know, where, where will people park? I know Charlie can walk his canoe up there.
In the parking lot.
Where the Historical Society and the, oh, okay.
Columbia Avenue, Henlopen Avenue.
Oh, on the sides of the street, all the way down. Listen, they're parking on Oak Avenue now and that's, that's new this summer, our street was full all summer. So, okay, and then, and the other thing, how much has we already put into it?
Mark, you addressed that one.
And for the record, that's Jan Conacy asking the question.
Okay, Bart Carter, Canal Improvement. To answer those questions, one, as far as funds put in by the city, the funds that have been utilized so far, a grant was acquired through the partnership that they were able to utilize some of those funds to contribute to what's, what's needed to occur so far. So that came from a grant from Dennerack ORPT. So technically, that was money that was given to the city.
The tree work.
There's some, some things that have occurred that I, I would have the city answer as far as like the tree removal and such. As far as maintenance and such goes, we've looked at maintenance, there's been a couple of different estimates, the lower end is around $8,000 per year. You're looking at predominantly hardscaping and to kind of go to the ADA, I have a nephew that's been in a wheelchair his whole life, he would be able to go down this thing, all the way to the bottom. Long ramps, nice landings and the such. Vegetation, you know, some mulch, different things like that, those would be the primary things that the maintenance would take, you know, need to go to. The high end, somewhere around $15,000. And I know that seems like a big window, but when you look at the organization, we're looking at establishing a, an endowment that would actually, we could contribute each year to, to that. So say that was $10,000. Our organization, if we were putting $10,000 a year towards that, that's a significant portion of the maintenance. And that's something we're, we're looking at doing. That's why our fundraising wouldn't stop at, there's now a dock that's complete. It's an effort that'll continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mark.
And how many years of maintenance is built into the current funding model?
Two. Yeah, I believe two.
Just say that for the.
Two's cur, two is currently built in based on the bid, so the first couple of years are, are there.
And I would just add that the ORPT grant that the city received, we probably expended approximately $50,000 from that for mat spang services.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
I'm Marie Hidkevich, I live at 221 Munson Street. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that have already been said, but I do wanna put into the record that this was not a good day for democracy. This whole issue was sprung on us at 10, whatever the budget meeting's ending time was. There was no mention on the agenda that we were gonna be talking about or approving this project moving forward. In fact, the project appeared to die or have suffered significant issues per the Cape Codex January 30th article, when the shortfall was recognized. I do think that Mr. Schranowski's point about establishing some kind of, presuming this project goes forward, that establishing some kind of formalized relationship is important because we're not just talking about the $280,000. This gentleman here talked about, well, first of all, this project went up 50% just in the time we've known it. This gentleman here talked about a 20% overrun or a 30% overrun. Are we gonna be responsible for that? We talked $280,000 and that's a pretty good size of money, but it's not the end because things do happen. I am not for the project, I think we have bigger priorities. I would appreciate that democracy work better and that the residents, the taxpayers be informed of what's going on. This data only came out Wednesday night. How is that time to communicate? It's a true failure of our city government that this has happened. And it's unconscionable if you do vote for it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, yes, or is she going in? Oh, she's coming up.
Oh, Anne, excuse me, if I could get that overhead on again. My name is Terri Eskew, I was here this morning at the budget meeting and I presented some of this information. I apologize to those of you who, this might be a repeat, but there again, I'm, I guess I'm entitled to my opinion. What I showed this morning was, I was very disturbed, first of all, and I'm just gonna quote the mayor. You said this morning, and I'm quoting here, you have the support from the entire community regarding this project. However, I went back down, back to the Mine Mixer from June 2019, excuse me. Anne, is there any way to enlarge that? Is there any way to enlarge the plan? Or the, I went back to the June 2019 Mine Mixer and there were only 39 respondents, which is really just ludicrous in a city of this size, that 39 people responded. And I really had no access to even see whether they responded positively or negatively to this. But, you know, my concern, and just repeating what was just said, I'm concerned about the future cost overruns because as we all know with construction, there are always cost overruns in the future. You're dealing with a site here that has been.
Anne, is there, Anne, is there a way to magnify that?
Is there a way to enlarge that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You're dealing with a site here where, you know, I'm sure, just like anything, you're dealing with construction, there's going to be cost overruns. So there again, I'm just adding my two cents worth in regards to, there is gonna be future money that's needed, who's gonna be on the hook, whose skin is gonna be in the game on this. The other thing is, one question I had in regards to the mention of Lewis, is there an adjacent parking lot at the dock that's being done there? You mentioned something about a Lewis.
Lewis, over the last several, I would say over the last decade, has improved their infrastructure along the canal. So there is a canal front park that has a canoe and kayak launch area, there's a public docking space, there's a private marina, and then across the canal, there's multiple slips that, so Lewis has a lot of infrastructure in place already.
No, I'm going about, I think for cars.
Oh, for, for cars.
For people, I mean, or kayaks.
Yeah. There's, there's a parking area next to the park, similar to like this, as far as spaces go.
Oh, this is small, okay, all right. Because there again, and there again, I, I'm sorry to repeat myself from this morning, but I really feel as if, you know, this project is running, I mean, you know, this project is running the budget instead of the other way around. You know, I think, personally, I think we should slow down, take the time to maybe make this project. Just, you know, maybe there's something we can do to make this project smaller so that we can establish a budget that we feel comfortable with, that the public has input in, and establish a budget where it fits our budget rather than the other way around. We're working with this, trying to fit our budget around this and doing all these machinations about where we're gonna get the future money and how it's going to happen. So those are the points that I wanted to make and I thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Please.
Amy Parvis, 51 Henlopen. Just a point of clarification, the gentleman who was talking about this just left, but there will be no water taxi, right? This is for personal craft coming in?
This is for anybody to use, pickup, drop-off people, people to fish, kayaks, paddleboards.
But in what, in their own boats or kayaks or whatever? I mean, are we doing a, an actual water taxi where people pay to come down here or is it?
She is not.
No, but, okay. Is, will there be a water taxi?
Could be.
Or is it only personal?
There, there could be, there are boats up in Lewis that originally wanted to do a water taxi, but there was no drop-off. So that's probably something that may be considered later on, but that's something for the city to consider at that time.
Okay, the gentleman who mentioned it said that there was one a while ago and it didn't, didn't pan out, so.
Well, it didn't pan out because there wasn't a place to drop people in Rehoboth.
Right, okay.
It's very successful, it's been there, up in Lewis for the last 10 or 12 years.
Okay.
I, I thought that was a goal.
Okay.
Of the project to have a water.
Love to see it happen.
Yeah, I, thank you.
There's no drop-off. Thank you.
Yeah, I really thought that was gonna be a problem. Yeah.
So the project, the infrastructure, does it exist here? Obviously, we, we know that. To, you know, kind of go to the guy, the gentleman that ran a water taxi, yes, he did run one from Lewis all the way down to Dewey. That's a significant haul, it was more of an excursion-type activity, but folks did enjoy, you know. And one of the things that, that we looked at for information on, would folks want some type of docking structure in Rehoboth was, we asked him to run a survey. And one of the things was, there's not a place to get off in Rehoboth Beach. And so that's, you know, that was a high, a high point. I feel like I'm crouching 'cause I'm tall, sorry. So the, you know, the infrastructure could open the door to that somewhere down the road, yes. And that can open, you know, that's one of the things that excited Dennerack and things is, 'cause it's an opportunity with parking, if 40 people park in Lewis and ride on a water taxi, that's a great thing. As far as personal water vessels and such, it provides access now for paddleboard kayak that you can carry down there and such and go for a nice trip on the canal.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
And I can answer Terri's question about the survey that was on Mine Mixer with the 39 responses. My recollection is it was about 50/50. Pro, 50, 50% people wanted it, 50% didn't.
Anything else?
Just a couple of things for this group, Mayor, if there's no other public comment. Was there somebody else? Oh, sure, sure. I'll wait till after yours.
You wanna go?
No.
No, you please.
You, you please go, yeah.
Dan Good, One Grove Street. I'll keep it very brief because I don't wanna iterate everything I said this morning, but I, in terms of fiscal responsibility, I, I will say that with very few exceptions up here, I think you're being derelict in ensuring the long-term financial stability of this town. Towns who have taken on as, as we have, close to 70 million in debt, the first thing that goes, if you have to declare, you know, bankruptcy, is the pensions for retirees. And we have many, we have our carpenter who's worked here since 1990. We have a situation in this town where the amount of debt per property owner is, is just of a magnitude that is untenable. So my main problem, this project may be a valuable one, but we don't have the funds. I don't wanna depend on this gentleman and his Patagonia vest, that's a broski vest from Wall Street, one of my son's, his employer gives them out. I don't wanna depend on it. And the, the very, I thought Mr. Commissioner Ed C. was very insightful. If the city has now committed 281K, what's the incentive now for any of these various foundations and restaurants to donate any money? There's another issue that I think raises some conflicts of interest. One of the major donors is Dogfish Head. And from what I understand, since they, they have an inn across the street from the dock in Lewis, I don't know how favorably, if I were an IRS analyst, I'd look at that as, as full-on corporate charity because it's in their interest to get these boats available or to be able to allow their inn, their guests that they're in to have a means to get by water to Rehoboth Beach. But, so I'm worried about that donation, whether they'll, when they realize they can't deduct it from their corporate taxes, that they may reconsider. But anyway, so I'd appreciate, because of the massive stormwater infrastructure upgrades and repairs we need to make, as well as the wastewater treatment plant pumps and other imminent, urgent projects, this needs to be deferred until I'd say more like $1.7 million is raised by this hard-working Canal Improvement Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming nobody else? If not, we'll move right into the next meeting.
Uh, wait, wait, Mayor, I do have a question, a comment, just in response to one or two of the questions. Folks ask, well, what if it goes over budget? It's already gone up. And there is $100,000 built into the proposal for contingency funds.
But that's less than 10%.
Well, it's temper, it's, it's a little less than 10%. You're, you're right, you're right. I, I do just wanna say that, that's in there. It's not something that's been ignored here in this, in this project. The other thing, we talked about it extensively this morning, I'm not sure we talked about it a lot, when you talk about public support for this project, this project has been in the CDP for 10 years. So even though the funding hasn't, a project similar to this is in the CDP, is my understanding. So Steve, I don't know, you did the research on that, is that accurate?
I have to say something.
Please, please.
I, that's a, I, I, that's a, unless, unless that changed.
Miss Conacy makes a good point. There, the, the concept was introduced. And the potential benefits were like addressed in a sentence or two.
Okay.
And, and so, but, but there, there, it did kind of view the concept of having a canal dock as a positive thing for that end of Rehoboth Beach.
It was addressed in the CDP.
Yes. And again, like, like Commissioner Gay said earlier, it was, it was one phase, the dock was one phase of a three-phase initiative that was identified in the CDP. And, and she very well described about the canal walk and, and what that meant as far as providing a, a wonderful environment for people to kind of enjoy the canal.
Okay, I just wanted that brought up in this meeting, it wasn't brought up yet. So thank you, Mayor.
That's it? All right. So Anne, we're just gonna move right into the next meeting. So with that, if I can ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Anne, just to, for the record, can you let the record know that as soon as I find Ms. Calusi, we'll be all present. I think she's right outside. But we can move on. There are a number of different correspondence. Most of these are due to item, I believe, item 14A in Old Business. Discuss it at that point in time. We're just gonna move right on to, I think there are two, two sets of minutes that you said. There are regular meeting minutes for April 24th, regular meeting minutes for September 17th. April 24th is 2019, January 17th of 2020. If I can get a motion and a second of the commissioners to.
There ought to be different votes because this, the January meeting was a different group from the April meeting.
All right.
I move approval of the minutes from the April 24th, 2019 Commissioner meeting.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for April 24th, 2019. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain as well.
Yep.
I move approval of the minutes from the January 17th, 2020 Commissioners meeting.
Second.
We have a. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, January 17th, 2020. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for that. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. We have one street aid expenditure in the amount of $9,104.65 to Delmarva Power for streetlights.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the street aid, street aid expenditure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve street aid expenditures of $9,104.65. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
On this past Wednesday, the Water Infrastructure Advisory Council approved the city's surface water matching planning grant in the amount of $25,000 to fund a stormwater utility feasibility study. The study is a follow-up to the recently completed Resilient Communities Partnership Project and will, over the next year, help the city plan and evaluate future infrastructure needs, obtain GIS data and information, evaluate potential rates, and assess a credit program and/or exemptions. So thank you to the project's coordinator and grant administrator for submitting that. The North Shores Meter Replacement Project continues, and the project is expected to be completed in mid-March sometime. Paving program, ADL has mobilized, the contractor has mobilized, and they are underway with concrete and sidewalk work. Paving is expected to begin in early March. The affected property owners have been notified. The paving locations, again, are Philadelphia Street from Scarborough Avenue to King Charles Avenue, from Third Street, from Lake Avenue to Columbia Avenue. A pre-construction conference was held on February 14th for the Phase II wastewater treatment plant contracts, and the contractor expects to mobilize in the next several weeks. This is for major electrical upgrades at the, at the plant. And you'll recall, we're working with Sussex County South Coastal for their wastewater treatment plant, and this is a funded project with the county. The Rehoboth Avenue Stormwater Investigation will be underway in the coming weeks. GHD, with assistance from city staff, are developing a fats, oils, and grease ordinance, and hopefully we'll have that ordinance to you in the next month or so. The city is reviewing two applications. I understand today that those applications have been granted from four AT&amp;T for smells, small cell antennas located at 1 Stokely Street and 500 Bayard Avenue. The Delaware Rural Water Association Annual Technical Conference is being held next week, February 25 to 27, and the city's water and wastewater staff will be attending that. The City of Rehoboth Beach Planning Commission is holding two expo sessions. The public is invited to attend these, to learn about the Comprehensive Development Plan Survey Results. And based on collected information and associated analysis, the city has identified a series of topics for consideration in the upcoming CDP discussions. The city is providing the opportunity for the public to review the documentation, along with initial issues, and to provide feedback. Very important expos here. They will be held on Saturday, March 21, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the convention center here. And the topics there will include economic development, connectivity, and infrastructure. And then again on Saturday, April 4, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., topics to include the environment, housing, and quality of life issues. And just a note to hopefully assist the various departments where we've had some issues in the past obtaining seasonal help. The city staff from the Parking Department, the Police Department, Building and Licensing Department will be attending the WBOC Job Fair on Saturday, next Saturday, February 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Dell Tech Georgetown Campus. And the Job Fair will allow city staff to promote season and full-time positions currently available with the goal of capturing a larger pool of applicants. Thank you.
I have two quick questions, Sharon. One, the small cell, did you say, I'm sorry, I didn't totally hear you. Are you saying they're being installed, or are there...
Permits have been granted.
So one of the things we had asked for, so the public kind of knows where they're going to be and when they're going to be installed, was the overall plan for the year for the installation and where and when these were going to be installed. So I don't think we've gotten that briefing yet. I think that would be very beneficial, so nobody's surprised with what's happening with the install, because I'm a little surprised we granted, I just didn't know, and I think our community would like to know. So is that something that, you know, you're prepared to present to us? And can we get that on the agenda so we know what's coming?
Well, certainly it'll be on the website, the plan for that. These were, these two were the first two approved for AT&amp;T, and my understanding, again, is they were just approved today.
Well, what we asked for was for the city to work with the vendors that want to install these small cells under our new ordinance and come up with a map and timeframe as to when and where they will be installed. So we had asked for that briefing a couple times, so, so that we can plan ahead. It sounds like it's coming in as one-offs as opposed to an overall plan.
These are the only two, so we...
But they have, they're going to have more.
But they haven't planned, they haven't told you what their plans are.
They haven't told, so...
No, not, and we have the permits and we know where the placement's going to be. We can present that at the next workshop meeting.
But they should be projecting ahead at this point.
So AT&amp;T told me that these are the two, that their engineers are saying, once they submit these, then there, there won't be any more.
Oh, and Verizon the same?
I don't know that, you know, that's today.
Okay.
But we, we can present that in a map form at the next meeting.
That'd be great. Thank you, thank you.
What's the, what's the normal lag time between permit and the actual construction? Any sense?
So they have a year to get, get that in place. However, they want to get it in place before the summer.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. So if we could possibly, if we could get that on the agenda for the next meeting, I'll remind. And then the second thing is, and this is just, we had a piece of public correspondence from Allison Bernard Feeney that was not related to our, our discussion on the foreign zoning. It was dated, an email dated February 18th, and, and her recommendation was that as part of the park maintenance plan, that we actually look at invasive plants, trash in the parks, and pruning, you know, of the, of the, the plants in the parks. And I just wanted to bring that up as a secretary, that that was submitted. And I don't know if you have any comments right now. Is that part of our park maintenance plan, or if we're not, you know, if you want to talk about that later? I just wanted to bring that up as a piece of public correspondence.
So it is, and it is part of our, some of that, I should say, is part of our park maintenance plan. And we've already done some extensive pruning in there. I think, you know, when the city arborist returns, she's on vacation right now, but we'll respond back to, to that individual. But we have restoration in our parks on a, on a regular basis, and it's under control, I should say, with good regeneration. So Liz can address that specifically, and she will get back to the property owner.
Sounds good, thank you.
Sharon, you mentioned potential ordinance being developed around fats, grease, oils, and their disposal. I'm assuming that pertains primarily to our commercial restaurants?
Yes.
Is that, okay. Is the chamber or the, or a restaurant group part of that discussion so that there'll be some ownership of this and there won't be a concern, or they won't be shocked about something new that's coming at them?
So last year, if, if you, you might recall, we started those inspections, and I'm not sure if we went out to the chamber to at least advise them, but as we move forward, we can certainly talk to the chamber about, just about the ordinance. And I regularly attend the chamber meetings, or luncheons, I should say, so I can bring it up there.
I mean, I think we're all for it. I mean, it makes very good sense when we talk about proper disposal of all of these kind of toxic materials and what happens to them. I think we just want ownership, and if the restaurant owners buy into it, then we're going to have compliance, and it'll go well, and we'll end up with the goal that we want.
Well, we're trying to get this in place before the summer season and the restaurants come back into play. Once we have the ordinance in place, when it comes to the commissioners and it's adopted, we will send out notifications to everyone indicating that the ordinance has been adopted, and we'll be inspecting again.
Thank you.
And I, I'm sure that Main Street would be helpful in, in relaying that information out to the businesses as well.
Correct.
And last, I'm sorry, a quick thing. Thank you for bringing up about the Planning Commission meetings. I just, I think that those are a really, really valuable thing. I know we've gone through some of this before, but I think the input from those expos are really, really going to be valuable in terms of updating the CDP, so I would just really encourage folks to, you know, attend those as they're coming up in the areas of your interests. So thanks in advance for that.
The city solicitor tells me he has no report.
Unless there's any questions for me. I don't have anything. Thanks.
Okay, let's go down the list. Planning Commission. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Richard Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue, and Chair of the Planning Commission. Thank you both City Manager and Commissioner Schlosser for promoting the CDP expos that are coming up. That saves me from having to go into it too much. I will say, however, that they really are important. They're important to the planning commissioners, in particular, as we develop the CDP, as well as the Board of Commissioners, because they have a very significant role in that as well. The purpose of these expos is not just to, you know, to give you an opportunity, to give the public an opportunity to look at the survey results, which were very helpful. They helped us identify the key topics that need further exploration and input from the citizens. And so this is intended to be an interactive process, to give citizens the opportunity to learn from state agencies, federal agencies, local agencies, local organizations, about what resources they have available to address the topics that have been identified, to help educate not only the citizens, but also the planning commissioners and the Board of Commissioners on these topics. And it also provides an opportunity for one-on-one communication and dialogue between yourselves and members of the Planning Commission, members of the Board of Commissioners, as well as city staff, to have conversations, you know, with everyone. I know that all of the planning commissioners intend to be at both of these expos, and will be available there to listen to your input and to also provide answers. There will also be a table set up at each that will be dedicated to explaining what the CDP is all about, why it is so important, and why your input is essential to the future of our city. At the last meeting of the Planning Commission, we also adopted amended bylaws and rules of procedure. We have streamlined a lot of things, moved provisions in the bylaws into policies and procedures, which more appropriately belong there so that people will understand exactly what the rules of the road are, so to speak, when they're making applications for site plans and things of that nature. We also had a rather robust discussion about Section 23630A of the, of the code, which involves site plan review by the Planning Commission, when certain site plans that are submitted for a building permit are required to come to the Planning Commission for review, and other sections of that code provision that provide some discretion on the part of the building inspector to refer matters to the Planning Commission. In furtherance of that, and our desire to ensure that those site plan applications that come be, come into the Building and Licensing Department that are of some significance, where there is discretion involved, that the Planning Commission is notified in advance to make a determination, either by the chairperson, which is myself, or the vice-chairperson, which is Jeff Trunzo, as to whether or not certain applications should be referred to the Planning Commission. We also identified, or had a discussion about the upcoming zoning code revisions, which is currently slated for a basically three-year process. The consensus of the planning commissioners was that we have already identified, over the course of reviewing, a number of projects that have come before us in the last few years, a, a number of areas of the code that require more immediate attention. One, because we will be constantly confronting them over the next couple of years as projects come before us, and rather than having parties have to go to the Board of Adjustment for variances, you know, our hope and expectation is that we can clear some of these up and not have to have that process continue. And so we plan on putting together a list of those items that we have identified already as critical changes that we would like to see changed, and we'll be submitting those to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. Any questions?
I just, I just want to say thank you for coming and reporting to us every month. This is incredibly helpful for me to understand kind of what the Planning Commission's doing, what's next on the agenda, what your priorities are. So, so just thank you for coming in person and letting us know what's happening with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important for, you know, more people to hear what we're doing. We do plan on initiating a newsletter on a periodic basis so that people will be able to see what we've been up to.
Great.
Rick, one, one question or clarification. For the public's sake, the, the expos that, the two expos in the next two months that you're having, this is a more intimate, one-on-one discussion, correct? It's not a town hall? Those will come later in the process? Is that fair?
Well, yeah. These, these expos are designed so that, for example, both Denrec, DelDOT, I mean, a number of state agencies who have programs in place and have resources that can be utilized by the city, including funding, want to come and explain what they can do for us. And, you know, local organizations as well will be invited to participate, and there will be booths for all of these different participants in these expos, where they'll be able to, you know, have one-on-one discussions with people who attend to explain what they have available, what kind of grant money, you know, they, they could make available to the city. Actually, the state agencies that have been contacted so far are very excited about these expos because they feel that for the, that finally the city is opening up and inviting them to participate, and they want to help us. You know, they, they feel that in the past, they haven't had that opportunity as much. And so, you know, this is a learning experience, as I said, for both, you know, the attendees as well as for city officials. This is the next step in the process of the CDP. Following this will be in the drafting stage of the CDP, and the next real opportunity for people to have input again will be once the Planning Commission releases the draft, and the public will have a chance to comment and provide red lines on that draft as we consider it for a final. There is always the possibility of some other town hall-type workshop. Nothing has been determined in that regard yet. That may depend a lot on the input that we get from people at these expos.
Yeah, I don't know if I, did I hear, so the next input would be after the draft? After the expos, the next opportunity for public input is the draft?
Well, in, in terms of actually having an opportunity to provide us with redlining comments.
Okay.
Obviously, we'd have to put the draft out so that people have something to read or something to comment on.
Well, no, yeah, actually, but I had thought at the last meeting, you said that after the expos, that the planning commissioners who were in charge of each expo were going to come to one of your meetings and present their findings from the expo, at which point there would be public comment in this setting, in this room, recorded, so people could see all that as a next step.
Well, yes, that, that is true also.
Is, okay, good, good.
No, that's, that's still the plan, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the public can come to any Planning Commission meeting and listen, watch, comment, correct?
Exactly, exactly, yes. Exactly, exactly, yes. We've actually restructured our agenda in the last couple of months so that we now have specifically provided for citizen comment, both during discussion of matters as well as at the end of the meeting, very, very much in the same way that the Board of Commissioners has their agenda set up.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, we're going to move right down to the committee reports. Animal issues, anything? Okay. Bandstand convention?
Nothing this one.
Beach and boardwalk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Stan Mills, Chair of the city's Boardwalk and Beach Committee. I'd like to just report on behalf of the Boardwalk and Beach members a few things. One is, as most of you know, the Boardwalk Committee made some recommendations some time ago on bathroom, restroom renovations, and the city manager was very receptive, and that was realized a year ago. But following that report, the committee members made recommendations after analyzing restroom sufficiency and made the recommendations that it's time for the town to add some family restrooms and changing rooms. And I'm going to be using this machine here. Thank you. And I lost my train of thought. Thank you. Family restrooms. And as you know, I'm going to be using this. As you know from today's discussions, you're going to be likely adding some funding in this year's budget to add two family restrooms and some family changing rooms and some standard changing rooms to the Delaware Avenue facility. And with a future project of looking at realizing a couple of recommendations from the committee at the Baltimore Avenue restroom facilities and Beach Patrol Building, that's specifically adding a second floor to the Beach Patrol and enlarging the restroom facility there to, again, include family restrooms and changing rooms. What I'd like to clarify and reiterate that I said earlier today at the budget hearing is that our committee recommends that funding be put in the budget this year for the engineering and design of the Baltimore Avenue facility. Now, what I'd like to clarify, and Kevin, if you listen, see if I get anything wrong, what I'd like to clarify is that a question was asked today of Kevin about, well, haven't we already done something to advance the Baltimore Avenue restroom facilities regarding family restrooms and changing rooms? And the response was, yes, some money has been put in there. But what I'd like to clarify, my understanding is that money was expended about a year ago to analyze the Baltimore Avenue facility with respect to can it indeed have a second floor? Can it be expanded without impacting and interfering with the renovations at that time? So my understanding is that by looking at the five-year capital improvement program, there's $120,000 in there, not for this year's budget, for next year's budget, for the engineering and design of how to put a second floor on and expand the restroom facilities. So what the committee is saying is we would like that $120,000. We prefer that it be in this year's budget so that we don't lose an entire year. Does that sound right? So anyhow, that's a clarification there. The other thing I'd like to show, if I can figure out how to get this. I'm using the monitor here. I did not bring my laptop in this time. And...
Mr. Mills, while you're doing that, the $120,000 is just to design the Baltimore Avenue? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's correct. From, that's direct from Kevin's mouth, to me. So our next topic is, as you know, the Boardwalk Committee made recommendation to re-implement a recycling program on the boardwalk. The commissioners were receptive and said, hey, let's go for the entirety of the boardwalk. There are 125 trash cans on the length of the boardwalk. And of course, for the typical recycling program is that a recycling bin should be co-located with every trash bin. So that means we need to buy 125 recycle bins. So again, we wanted to thank Sharon, City Manager, and Kevin. They jumped right on it at that point and started with the logistics of how to make it work, looked into buying an electric vehicle for collection of the recyclables. And one of the things that the Boardwalk Committee took on was taking a look at the color scheme, if you will, of the trash in the co-located recycle bins. One of the things we looked at, we were mindful of the blue trash bins. Now, if you'd see on the screen, this is the typical current trash can that we have. They're blue. We've looked at these as in three components. You've got the can color, 55-gallon drum can color. You've got the bag which overhangs, and then you've got the lid. So there's kind of three colors there, and we looked at that with our schemes. Just FYI, these 55-gallon drums have the large bag that overhangs, and as the bags fill up, the bags kind of suck up a little bit, but they still are always visible, so there's still always a component of there. Two years ago, when the Boardwalk Committee started looking at getting the trash truck off the boardwalk, we contemplated how to get rid of these blue cans. We thought that they were kind of ugly and they kind of jumped out like a sore thumb up and down the boardwalk. But at that time, we said, let's wait until recycling comes about and we'll put that into a conversation. And so that's what we've, we've done. So you've got the typical boardwalk can. You've got the typical can of the concrete in a gray theme that's up and down Rehoboth Avenue in the commercial area. That's just FYI. The other thing we have in the very north end of the boardwalk is a co-located recycle bin with a trash can. These are the solar-powered Big Belly compacting cans. Again, that's just FYI. The color combination that the committee came up with finally was something that we tried to look for a little more sophistication, if you will, on the boardwalk. We were also mindful that, for us to change colors, that there's a rationale to do that because, because we were mindful that many years ago, probably a decade ago, Public Works took the white iconic swingback benches, built new ones, and they were brown. And the public was outraged at changing the color. So we were very careful and delicate in looking at changing the colors here and believe that there is now a rationale for doing it. And again, gives us maybe a little upgrade and look or sophistication. So what we came up with was an all-gray trash can combination, gray 55-gallon drum, gray trash bag, and a gray top. For the recycle bin, we came up with a blue 55-gallon drum, a clear bag, and also a blue top. Now, we thought, I think, I can speak for everybody, that we thought that the gray would be absolutely invisible when it was put on here, and that the clear would be absolutely invisible. And as you can see, it's not. So one of our recommendations is that as time goes on and we see that the volume of trash is now split between the two cans, that maybe in the future, we can consider a liner inside these so that the trash bags can be hidden inside. Because, I didn't bring a picture, but they're absolutely gorgeous, if you will, when you look at them when they don't have those bags. And if you remember, the cans on Rehoboth Avenue, they do have those liners because you don't see any of those, those bags there. So I wanted to be mindful also that based, our recommendation recommended taking a look at the guidelines and a 2003 analysis of recycling on the beach and boardwalk, when that plan was first programmed, was first implemented back in 2002, 2003. And that is that you have to have adequate labeling and pictorials on it to tell people what is recyclable, what is not recyclable, and then also have size restrictions were recommended. And as you can see on the, the blue can, has a size restriction so that it does not accept your pizza boxes. Our aim is for plastic bottles and aluminum cans, which just happen to be the two top commodities that are recycled in the state of Delaware for monies. Any questions? If not, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. Move on. Mr. Garlo, anything you want to say?
I think it's not there.
You don't have to run. We got all night.
Charlie Garlo, 82 Sussex Street, Chair of the Environment Committee. Not much to report. We have attended and encouraged Mr. Mills on the recycling on the boardwalk, and we're looking forward to seeing that happen. We have, we're getting close to being in a position to make a recommendation to the commissioners on the plastic single-use products, and, but we're not quite ready to do that. So we're hoping that that recommendation and other recommendations we have behind it will have zero impact on budget so that we'll be one of the most frugally prudent committees that you have.
When's your next meeting, Charlie?
That's the first Friday in March, which is the third?
Sixth.
Sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. No, it's okay.
Thank you.
11 o'clock.
Thank you, Charlie. Law oversight, I think you sent me an email today. I'll get out to the commissioners and out to everybody on that. Advisory, one, nothing?
No, nothing.
Parking advisory, nope. Streets and transportation?
Yes, I have a couple of things briefly. The Streets and Transportation Committee has been hard at work, and we've gotten some great data. So I just want to give, you know, two brief updates. First of all, we got, in conjunction with the DelDOT surveys and data, have information that 60,000 bikes per year come into the city through the two major gateways. Actually, I don't know, it was three, three gateways, but the report we got back says the two major gateways, 60,000 bikes a year. And, you know, I think it's, first of all, I love having the data to support recommendations, but, you know, the bike infrastructure is so important to the city for both an environmental perspective, obviously not, you know, cars not burning gas, from a traffic congestion perspective, and for our economy, bringing people into town to eat in our restaurants and spend money. So it checks a lot of boxes, and it's a win-win-win for everybody, and the infrastructure to support it is extremely important. This is my two cents on this now, and it also scored very highly in the CDP, both from a desirability perspective as well as from a need perspective. So I'd like to, going forward, I think the committee will take this data and, and be very bold about making recommendations for improving our bicycle infrastructure, and I fully support that. The other thing that happened is that our chairman, David Mann, had been on, in touch with DelDOT about the problems and issues at the traffic circle, specifically the high entry speed and the failure to yield. And so DelDOT has, has said that they may be able to help on this. They have, they have suggested pavement markings, devices, and active and passive vertical measures such as signage and flashing lights, some of which I know is there, but they're, they're willing to look at it more and to help us improve and answer those, deal with those issues.
Great, thank you. Anything from the chamber?
Yes. Carol is actually out away. She's out of town for a couple of weeks, but I wanted to report briefly on a downtown advisory meeting that she held on February 4th. There were 34 attendees from the Business District. They discussed a number of issues. One is that the chamber is going to be selling passes for the Dart buses at the visitor's center this summer. They have not done that previously, but they will be doing that this summer because Dart is, has made their park-and-ride parking lot free, and that could be really a game-changer in how people get into town. So the chamber is going to help out by, by making available the passes. In fact, she's going, Carol hopes to have Dart come speak at the next general meeting of, of the chamber, which is on March 20th, lunch meeting on March, Friday, March 20th. And there was general acceptance from the, from the membership about Dart's plans. All of their, they have various pricing options and weekly passes and monthly passes and multiple-use cards and all that. One request they had from us, that when I heard it that day, I realized we had not done, the parking rules that we discussed in January, we were never finalized. So all their materials have gone out for the year, but the, the change in the meters, going back to 12 hours, doing away with the three hours, which is what we talked about, have not been voted on or finalized, and there was a request that we should do that pretty soon. And then, lastly, there were presentations from the Homeowners Association and from SOLA and from the Environment Committee about the, the issues of plastics and various, various forms and various bans that are being considered. And right now, their take is that the plastic bag ban would be accepted because it ties into what the state is doing, as long as it's done on that timeframe. For anything else, they would, they would want to see actual ordinance language in order to go back to their members and get input. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Nothing from the historical side? Anything from Main Street?
Dan Slagel, the Executive Director, is here.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners, to allow me to speak. I'm Dan Slagel, the Executive Director of Rehoboth Beach Main Street. Just want to highlight some of the things we're doing, we've been doing for the last few months, and I'm really proud to tell you how much we have done. So we went from 42 members in September to 110 members, 15 of those January and February. So I'm really pleased that January and February has been busy as far as membership for our business. Also, some more residents have signed up, our community members, so I'm really excited about that. Also, we are planning a open house here at the Convention Center on March 4th, okay? We also have a flyer that's going out. It's for the open house. It's from 10 to 11:30 a.m. It's for hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, churches, anyone that wants to have a meeting. So we want to have this open house to draw the Convention Center so it can get booked. So we're having an open house. Also, we're having an oldies dance here at the Convention Center on April 3rd. Rehoboth Main Street is sponsoring, but it's to benefit Rehoboth and Bloom. So we're very excited about it. So come out and have fun. It's from 7 to 10 p.m. So that's an event we have coming up. We are relaunching the coupon book. It's a Rehoboth Beach Downtown official guidebook. It will be, we will be printing 40,000 copies for the downtown hotels, real estate, transportation companies, the visitor's center, and events. In this guidebook, you will find articles on where to shop, eat, play, stay, money-saving coupons in the back. So we're really excited about to bring that back. That was in 2010, 11, 12, and 14, so we're bringing it back because we're like, we think it'll really help promote downtown. We'll continue our sign and awning matching grants program. We've already given out one grant so far this year. So we're really excited about that. For new businesses that are coming in town, they can get a $500 grant towards their new signage. So we're trying to help promote that. Also, we're implementing the 2020 College in Town Awards, which will highlight preservation and rehab projects. So we're really excited about that. Also, Rehoboth Bloom is in the process of putting the banners back up downtown in April, so we're working on that, and the streetscape. Also, the Economic Vitality Committee is planning a workshop here at the Convention Center for social media and marketing to help the new business owners and present business owners to attend. So we're working on that. David Root is with the Small Business Association of Delaware. He is on our committee, and he's going to work with the business owners so they can be set up for success. So we're excited about that. Also, we're working on our newsletter to get that out within the next month. We're working on a brand-new website. So that is just some of the highlights, the things we're working on for Rehoboth Main Street.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Dan, I just wanted to thank you. We had asked you to send some financial, additional financial information to the commissioners, and you did. And I know we'll be using that to consider, you know, your funding requests. So thank you for being so prompt and sending that info out.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. And finally, I'm sorry it's taken so long, but we have a presentation from Heather Metz, City of Rehoboth Beach property owner and a member of the Environment Committee, relating to her views regarding health hazards, wireless communication facilities, and 5G technology. Now, this came up before, and Heather is a member of the Environment Committee, and so she had some, some pretty serious concerns, and so she wanted to present that to us today with the idea that, you know, some of these things that she presents, maybe we push back to the Environment Committee to make some suggestions from a change perspective in our ordinance or whatever.
Yes, thank you.
But I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah.
Sorry it took so long.
Oh, no. Thank you for the introduction. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, everybody, and I do appreciate you having me speak today. I'm going to talk more about what the scientific community has to say about 5G, more so than what my own views are. I'm here today as a parent, as a citizen, as a member of the Environmental Committee, and as an engineer with experience in working in public utilities, to ask that you consider, the Commission consider, a few changes to the city's zoning ordinance, 270-46-1.2. This ordinance determines the placement of wireless communications facilities, radio frequency transmitters, that telecom companies are requesting to put in our city's rights-of-way. I strongly believe these changes are needed, given the potential risk to human health. The potential threat to human health comes from an order issued by the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, in 2018 called the Small Cell Order. The intent of this order is to streamline the rollout of the new 5G technology. Telecom companies are advertising the big race to 5G as safe to, as safe new technology that we all need, that will benefit everyone, and I really wish that were true. Unfortunately, the new 5G radio frequency does not travel very far, so telecom companies are asking to place small cell radio frequency transmitters 50 to 25, or 25 to 50 feet off the ground and 100 to 500 feet apart on light, flag, traffic, and electric poles in public rights-of-way in commercial and residential areas. And you guys may have seen them. We have one at the intersection of Rehoboth Avenue and First Street. It looks like an extra-wide telephone pole with an extra-wide can. It's very nicely disguised. There's one on the boardwalk where the big lights are. There's another one at the end of the boardwalk. Where did we find the other one? Oh, there's, the other one is actually, Anne, if you would light that up, this is one of them right here, the one that's on the bathhouse.
There's one across from the bandstand as well.
Yeah, and there's one more. I can't find it. I don't know where it is.
There's one on top of the bandstand?
Yeah, I got that one, but then there's
One at First Street and Wilmington.
Okay. Yeah, there was one that we missed, but... Yeah. So, each small cell, each one of these small cells can carry up to 100 antenna and is intended to saturate the city with radio frequency emissions. Telecom companies have the option to provide the same service to residents using fiber-optic cable, which is resistance to weather, resistant to weather and emits no radio frequency transmissions. Currently, jurisdictions like ours' right to refuse placement of small cell transmitters are limited, provided that the FCC radio frequency standards established in 1996 are met. As our city's ordinance is currently written, a telecom company could request that a transmitter be mounted to a pole that is just outside of a child's bedroom window, and we would have no means to prevent it. Since 2013, at the urging of scientists, doctors, citizens, and government officials, including senators and Congresswomen, throughout the country, the FCC has been considering, updating its 1996 radio frequency exposure standards. These standards determine the amount of radio frequency that a human can be exposed to before harm is caused. In November, just this past November, in an effort for us to comply with these zoning provisions, Rehoboth Beach updated its zoning provision 270. In December, the next month, after seven years, the Federal Communication Commission finally issued its ruling on updating its safety standards. Their ruling was that their 24-year-old standards from 1996, before the iPhone was even invented, were sufficient to protect public health and would remain unchanged. This FCC decision changes everything. The concern here is that these outdated standards will not protect public health. The 1996 radio frequency exposure standards were established before 2G, 3G, 4G, and the exponentially stronger 5G were even invented. In addition, these exposure standards do not take into account the 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-year exposure from a combination of 2, 3, 4, and 5G and multiple carriers that can be located in the same transmitter, on the same pole. So, we could have AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile, and Sprint all transmitting from the same location. And these, these can be placed in close proximity to residents. As you guys know, the setbacks in Rehoboth Beach can be as little as 15 feet from the right-of-way. These small cells may contain 3 and 4G transmitters intended for towers hundreds of feet high. You guys know the big giant towers that you see all over town. The big transmitters that are up there can be placed in these small cells. There is nothing prohibiting the carriers or the FCC from, from allowing them to do that. There are stacks full, right here, I'm sure you guys are just dying for me to go through there, through them. There are stacks full of peer-reviewed published studies raising concerns about serious health effects. I believe there is a serious public health risk, especially to children, but this complex science is not settled, and the FCC has refused to study it. As a result of the failure of the FCC to issue current safety standards, there are many communities taking action to protect residents from exposure to this unregulated new tech, technology. States and cities and small towns all over the country are revising their ordinances or taking legal action in order to slow the rollout of this technology. The tide is turning, especially since the FCC issued that ruling in December. The tide is turning, and new examples are being reported every day. One of my favorites is a California judge just called the FCC testing standards, and I quote, "Dumb," D-U-M-B. It has also been reported that the entire country of Switzerland has halted the rollout of 5G to further study its health effects. Caution is warranted, especially until the FCC does its legal duty under the National Environmental Policy Act and the Administrative Procedure Act, which requires federal agencies like the FCC to assess the environmental effects of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. The FCC must reevaluate the radio frequency standards in light of recent research and determine if they adequately protect human health. I urge you to use your local authority to protect public health. There are permits being requested, which I guess were approved, in residential areas of our city right now, so I ask you to please, let's work together to take action now. As elected and appointed officials, it is your primary duty to protect the health and safety of your constituents above all other interests. Today, I ask that you consider the recommended changes to zoning, 270-46-1.2, to take minimal steps to proceed with caution until the full impacts of radio frequency exposure are better understood. I have for all of you a copy of suggestions.
I think we already have.
We may, is it this?
With the orange little sticky?
Yeah, no, this is, well, this is some new, I've been working really hard last week, so I've updated some of this stuff. So, and also, just to brief you guys, right now, if we decide to take action on this, we would not be alone. Montgomery County is, currently has an appeal in the Ninth Circuit Court that was just heard on February 10th, and the decision on that will not be issued for some months, but their allegation is that these, again, these FCC 24-year-old 1996 standards do not protect public health, and so they're taking this to court. As well as 30 other jurisdictions, including Montgomery County, Anna Rundell, Howard, and Baltimore Counties, and large cities like Seattle, San Francisco, and Austin, Texas, are suing the FCC for usurping local authority. In other words, taking away your authority to decide where the small cells and where these wireless transmitters should go in your city. There are many other local jurisdictions, including New York State, which just passed a bill 8637 to study the risks to humans and the environment due to increased radio frequency exposure. New Hampshire has just passed a bill to establish a commission to study the environmental and health effects of evolving 5G technology. This is the whole state, not just a local, a small city. In 2019, Hillendale Beach, Florida, voted unanimously to ask the federal government to study the health effects of these small cells and develop guidelines to protect public health. Montana House has passed a resolution calling on Congress to amend the FCC standards. The Fairfax, California, is prohibiting self, cell, small cells in residential zones and requires a 1,500-foot separation between small cells, and also required the city to study the viability of a fiber-optic cable, which would provide the exact same service, the same speed, and the same connectivity as these small cells in residential areas. San Rafael, California, is requiring a 500-foot setback from any residential areas, as well as Sonoma County with a 500-foot setback. Boonville, Arkansas, is restricting new cell towers to industrial areas only. Patuma, California, is that no small cell is permitted within 500 feet of any residence. Monterey, California, the city commissioners voted 7 to 0 to deny Verizon's application for a small cell tower to be placed in a residential area. So, we are not alone here if we want to take action. Again, there are many other jurisdictions who are taking action, who are pursuing this in court, and who are amending their local ordinances to protect their citizens from the harm that this radiation can cause. Some of my suggestions, and it's in the packet that I just gave you, of some very small changes. I know that this ordinance was just amended in November, and it probably feels very painful to want to do that process again, but I have three small recommendations for things that you could do to protect your residents. The first one is to, that no wireless communication facility should be allowed within 100 feet of any residence, and/or all wireless communication facilities are permitted in the commercial C1 zone only. Again, this is very similar to what other jurisdictions are doing to protect their citizens. There's a couple of other recommendations in there, including that the, even our ordinance says that Bulletin 65 of the SEC, that minimal safety standard established in 1996 has got to be met, and I would strongly recommend to the city that any telecom company that wants to put a small cell in a residential area, submit documentation done by a licensed radio frequency engineer showing that at the site of that self-proposed wireless communication facility, that they have actually taken measurements and that they can certify that they, they will at least abide by those 24-year-old standards. So, that's in your package here. Some of the, I'm not going to bore you guys with all of this, but I would like to at least go over some of the summaries here in some of the health effects, because I think some people think that this is a fringe movement of people to talk about this radio frequency being harmful to humans, when really it is not a fringe movement. It's just something that's not well-publicized for obvious reasons. The telecom companies are doing lots of really amazing advertising. You guys all watch the Super Bowl, right? 5G, yeah. So, these are some of the studies, and I'll just go through them very quickly. So, this is the BioInitiative. This was developed between 2012 and 2017. It has 69 peer-reviewed studies. 93%, 93% of them show health effects from radio frequency, including DNA damage, leukemia, Alzheimer's, allergy, miscarriage, insomnia, and that children are at a special risk. And I can make this available for you guys to read. Next, we have one from the American Academy of Pediatrics that supports, and I quote, "supports the reassessment of radiation standards for cell phones and other wireless products and the adoption of standards that are protective of children." It cites an Egyptian study that found increased risk for headaches, memory problems, dizziness, depression, and sleep problems. And a letter from President Thomas McInerney of the American Academy of Pediatrics urges the FCC to adopt radio frequency standards that protect children. The National Toxicology Program finds clear evidence of cancer and DNA damage in a two-year study from the National Institute of Health that finds a 5% increase in cancer in rats. Which are commonly used for human studies. The National Toxicology, I'm sorry, there, the 253 doctors and scientists from 42 nations who have published peer-reviewed studies citing, signed the International Scientist Appeal, which calls for a moratorium on 5G citing human health effects and impacts on wildlife. Effects, again, include increased cancer risk, cellular stress, increase in harmful free radicals, genetic damage, structural and functional changes in the reproductive system, learning, memory deficits, and quote, "damage goes well beyond the human race as there is growing evidence of harmful effects to both plant and animal life." Another study. Ph.D. Martin Paul, who is a professor emeritus of biochemistry and medical science from Washington State University, summarized the evidence of radio frequency as an attack on the nervous system, the hormonal systems, that it will lower fertility and cause cancer. And this one is from Ph.D. Paul Ben Ashai, who found that 5G radio frequency is absorbed into the sweat ducts at much higher rates than other tissues, and that the sweat ducts act as small receivers for this radio frequency. He says, and I quote, "We are raising a warning flag, so the possible consequence of public health are explored."
So, Heather, if I can interrupt you.
Yes.
So, what you're suggesting is we take a look at the code that we just passed, the ordinance that we just passed, and make some minor adjustments
Yes.
These certain suggestions that you've made.
Yes.
Now, you know, in all honesty, Glenn, I was under the impression that from the FCC perspective, it's like we have to allow these vendors the opportunities. From a legal perspective, can we put in these restrictions? I mean, I know some of these other municipalities have, but from a legal perspective, I mean, people put rules in all the time, and it's not legal. What I'm fearful of is we put something in that we can't really say no. And as you've said, you know, some of the rules that are in there as it is kind of give municipalities limited amounts of discretion. Now, I know you've suggested here from a number of these different things, you know, get it out of the residential area and put it in the commercial area.
Right.
That's what I'm asking is, is if Verizon comes to us tomorrow and wants to put in five towers, can we, if we change this? Could we go to them and just say, from a legal perspective, FCC, whatever it is, with what's under government rules, say, "No, you can do it on Rehoboth Avenue, but you can't do it on Bayard."
Yes, we have to change our ordinance first, of course.
But, yes, if we change our ordinance, is it still valid? Because the federal government, unfortunately, and I don't trust the federal government today to not take away what you're asking for, for the federal government to do tomorrow, because I think they'll take it all away in the next couple of years. But...
So, I think the federal legislation is pretty broad and gives, gives great protections to the carriers to be able to do and place facilities in a lot of locations. However, I think probably in the room, the most knowledgeable person here is Ms. Metz. So, I, you know, I'm not prepared to discount these three primary recommendations she's made without spending a little bit of time looking at them, which I'm happy to do and...
I think the most, the biggest issue here is that the FCC is not following the federal law, which says that the National Environmental Protection Policy Act says that this technology needs to be studied prior to implementing anything, and so, you know, it's, it's our local jurisdiction's obligation to protect our citizens first, and that we have the backing of this National Environmental Policy Act.
Today?
Yeah, it's, it's been in place for quite some time.
I don't know about tomorrow.
How are the other, how are all these other municipalities able to do this? I have, I am aware of the Montgomery County, Maryland. I know that's been very controversial there for a long time.
Well, they're going to court, so I can tell you that I watched the court proceedings on the 10th. You can watch them remotely because they're in California, and the judges did not look very happy with the FCC. And when I say the tide is turning, I say that with confidence that this, it is truly turning, and there are local jurisdictions who, more and more every day, who are taking action, and the courts seem to be supporting them. So, my feeling is that we ride that tide, we change our ordinance, we protect our citizens, and that this is easy to do.
I would also like to, in addition to the solicitor looking at the first three points and whether we can right now, under FCC, you know, regulations incorporate these into a change, I think your final point there, you know, is similar to other localities. You recommend we, you know, go to the Delaware State Legislature. I think that I would like to ask the commissioners for some sort of consensus that the Environmental Committee kind of draft something and bring a recommendation on this to the Board of Commissioners. Dick, what do you think? Dick, what do you think as kind of one of the other members?
Yeah, I think a recommendation to us from our committee is good, but I would challenge the committee, though.
Yeah.
To dig deep into this, and not, and with all due respect, you know, I could go out and within a few hours have a pile of research from reputable scientists and physicians that would argue against all of that.
It really doesn't exist.
Well, it does exist, because prior to today, I went in just to read after I read all of your good information, and thank you, Heather.
There is, there is the 7%.
But, but there are.
Yes.
A number of reports from very reputable scientists, not fringe people.
Well, yeah.
For example, the two-time Pulitzer Prize-winning science writer from the New York Times has written a number of articles.
Yes. So can I address that? Because I got the article that you sent me, which was the New York Times alleging that people that are opposed to 5G are part of a Russian conspiracy. And I can assure you that I am not a part of a Russian conspiracy, nor are the 24 other parents that I work with on a commission in Fairfax County to oppose the cellphone tower that they wanted to put at our high school. But I can tell you that the New York Times has a partnership, a financial joint venture with Verizon to provide 5G service. So they have a financial interest in exposing that. Not only that, but the advertising revenue that the New York Times, which I thought was, I burst my bubble a little bit to think that they were not impartial, but they have a business venture with Verizon. So them publishing that article and criticizing those hard-working scientists and doctors, and putting them out like that was inexcusable, in my opinion.
I'm not arguing that, that, what I said. The point is that there's a lot of conflicting information.
There is, and that's why we need to study it, and that's why we need to slow this down.
And that's what I'm recommending.
So we can wait for the Federal Communications Commission to issue a report.
That our environment committee not take this lightly.
That is thorough.
If this is what we ask, that they dig deep into this.
Because 24-year-old standards that were made before anyone, no one had an iPhone until 2007. These standards at that point were already 11 years old. So, I mean, think about that.
All right. So I think taking Commissioner Schloss or Commissioner Burns' suggestions to, sorry, Charlie.
Sorry, Charlie.
You know, for your group.
Can I just say, in all fairness to the Environmental Committee, we were only, you guys only voted on us in November, and we had our first meeting, we each got to pick two things we wanted to work on. This was one of mine. I was the only one who had this issue, so the committee very nicely had me give a presentation at the last meeting about this issue. So we really have not had time to have consensus on this at all.
Oh, no, no, and that's what I'm saying. We're not going to be able to do anything.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to think we weren't prepared.
No, no. And I'm just saying, you guys can do some more thought-provoking discussions. And simultaneously, Mr. Mendelis will take a look at the suggestions that you've made relative to our actual provisions.
Clearly, as a community, we're not alone in this. We need to take advantage.
No, we aren't, yes, absolutely.
Of all of the research and the work that other committees have already done.
Yes, and I have lots of it for you if you'd like to read more.
The science end of it and the legal end of it.
Yes, it's both, absolutely, it's both. The thing I just will caution you on is that as these small cells are approved, in effect, once the genie's out of the bottle, it's impossible to put it back. So every time you issue one of those permits, you're exposing your constituents, your residents, to unknown radio frequency. And once that tower goes up, you have no control over what they put in it, you have no control over taking it down. So I ask that you do this quickly.
Soon as we can.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I think in addition to the health issue, it's an important zoning issue. I mean, that's what I've noticed out of some other jurisdictions, and what you, the points you've made about residential neighborhoods, that's what I have seen. I have seen people say, you know, "It doesn't belong in residential neighborhoods, it affects property values," you know.
There are many other issues. I came today to speak to you particularly about the health issue, but I also want to stress the one community that did go back to the telecom companies and say, "You can provide the same service using fiber-optic cable," and the only reason they don't want to do that is it costs them more money. But that's a perfectly viable option, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Heather. Really appreciate that information. And obviously, you're on the committee, so you're already speaking with them, and Glenn will take a look at this and see what we can do. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're going to move into Old Business, which is the first item in the Old Business, is further discussion of the draft ordinance to amend Chapter 270 relating to gross floor area. I think in your packets, and I think everybody else has too, I had asked Mr. Mendelis to do a little bit more substantial summary of what we are suggesting here, and then we can probably also give a little bit of a history perspective, but if you wouldn't mind.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this has been before you a couple times, commissioners. This is the proposed amendments to zoning code, which would help clarify and somewhat revise the definition of gross floor area. I did do a short memo, as the mayor mentioned, and the memo summarizes the major changes to the ordinance. So let me just read those first. So to be specific, first, the gross floor area would only include enclosed temperature-controlled spaces, and I'll show you where that shows up in the ordinance this time around. Next, subsurface parking areas will be specifically excluded from gross floor areas, so that's those underground parking areas will no longer be counted as part of the gross floor area. Third, outdoor areas, including open porches, decks, patios, balconies, and pergolas, will be specifically excluded from gross floor area. If you recall, last time when we looked at this provision in the proposed ordinance, it said, for example, these areas, the, for example, has been removed now, so these are the specific circumstances that would be excluded. Fourth gross floor area will continue to include the horizontal area of any space at grade beneath any building created by pilings, piers, or any other natural support, which is greater than four feet in height, except that if the building is located within a special flood zone, hazard area, the underbuilding space will not be included unless the building is elevated more than a foot over the requirements of the floodplain regulations. So if you elevate a building, and this is presently in the ordinance, but this just clarified that it's the horizontal space at grade. So if you elevate a building using piers, for example, the, or pylons, the, that space underneath it will be included with gross floor area unless you're required to elevate it due to the floodplain ordinance. But if you elevate it more than a foot over the requirement of the floodplain ordinance, then it will be, it will be included. Finally, because open porches are specifically excluded from gross floor area under the new proposal, there will no longer be the 250-square-foot gross floor area exclusion for open front porches in the residential district. Those are the major changes. If you look at the ordinance that's before you, a couple of things that changed from last time, that's at line 50. Again, it's specifically identifying those spaces that enclose temperature-controlled spaces. So it says that gross floor area is the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of a building, measured from the exterior face of the exterior walls, enclosing temperature-controlled spaces. We struggled a little bit with exactly how to define which spaces, and how do you define exterior walls? So what it's settled on at this point is those walls that enclose temperature-controlled spaces. Then if you look at line 53, where it says, it lays out the areas that are specifically excluded, and underlined, it says, "Subsurface parking areas and outdoor areas, including," it used to say there, it used to say "including comma, for example," now it just says "including open porches, decks, patios, balconies, and pergolas." In the synopsis of the ordinance, I wanted to point out, this is at line 201, it still says, "For example," I meant to take that out, so that'll be deleted, where it says, "For example, open porches, decks, patios," it'll now just say "including open porches, decks, patios, balconies, and pergolas." Those are the major changes. For over the last time that we discussed it, there is a public hearing resolution today.
Glenn, just before we get into that, do you mind if I just jump in real quick? I just, there's, you know, there's a lot of public correspondence on this.
Absolutely.
And I think somehow, as I mentioned in our budget meeting today, facts tend to get, I want to, I want to talk about the facts of this. How this, in the background, how this started, and why this, we asked you to draft an ordinance, was that over the past decade, and Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong here, okay, but over the past decade, the city has interpreted our code to exclude structures such as decks from FAR calculations for residential properties. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, about a couple months ago, over the past couple months, there's been maybe three months or four, but there's been two recent Board of Adjustment rulings, where the Board of Adjustment found that structures such as balconies, et cetera, should be counted in commercial FAR calculations. And so because the current code does not distinguish between commercial and residential interpretations of the FAR relative to decks, the city, rightly so, immediately began, changed the past practice, and started counting decks into FAR calculations. For both existing residential properties, it's now counted, when it wasn't in the past, and for new construction. So basically what that means is many, many, many properties, I tried to get a number, but I suspect it's many properties in town, because of this immediate change, are now out of FAR compliance, residential properties. I just want to talk about residential properties, because that was my concern. And new, and, and property owners who want to build a new property now are subject to this new interpretation for residential properties. And so we got a lot of feedback from those wanting to build, and from those who have existing decks, and are now out of compliance, open decks. And we said, "Hey, let's, we got to, we got to fix this, okay?" For decades, it's been interpreted the same way for residential properties, now all of a sudden it's not. So let's fix that, so that it remains consistent with past practice. And so I think what happened is you got a lot of different guidance and feedback in drafting this over the past, you know, couple months, whenever we started it, and we kind of lost sight of what the real intent of this is. It's not to do an overhaul of the code, it was to fix this one problem, at least this is Lisa's, and this is why I supported redoing this, is it's to fix this one problem where we inadvertently put many, many residential homeowners out of compliance with the FAR because of the change that was made and the rulings made by the Board of Adjustments. So I just wanted to put that out for the commissioners, for the public, that somehow we've, and through nobody's fault, I think, just you got a lot of different comments, and we all said, "Well, boy, we should fix this, we should..." It was only intended to fix that one problem, so.
And I agree with that. That's where we were going.
I really would like some feedback on it.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to say that.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, all right. So please add in, but I, my recognition is we hold off a public hearing right now and go back to redesigning this ordinance to, to focus on the problem we're trying to solve, and it's the correct change, the change to practice that puts so many...
There's so much of a concern.
Again, the public hearing is not tonight. The public hearing would be a month from now.
I understand that. I still think we need another version of this that goes back to addressing the real reason we even started this process. It's to protect our, and honor and codify what has been a practice for residential...
Let's hear what Pat wants to add.
There are some other issues. There are some other issues other than just the residential deck thing. It has to do with commercial that came to the Board of Adjustment.
I want to address that. I want to hear from Pat first.
I'm just saying what Lisa's, this commissioner's intent was for supporting this ordinance in the first place. It was for residential.
Right, exactly.
Fixing a past practice.
I remember you bringing this forward for this very purpose, and I knew it was a real issue for, for building and licensing. But I have to say, I was really, really concerned when I see open porches added to this, because, and it may be unintended, but my goodness, it could cause a huge issue. I think we can't have open porches as a part of this. In fact, all the rest of this, with the exception of the decks, the decks and the patios are pretty much covered by the lot coverage issue. So there's only so much that can be done anyway, but the open porches...
Pat, can you expand on that a bit? Because I think what you're saying is that what the intent was for this is to exclude, like decks, open decks, from FAR coverage calculations.
Right.
However, it does not include, is not exclude the property owner from complying with, you know, green space and setback and other requirements, correct?
Correct, that's right. That's what I'm saying, is the lot coverage still keeps some control over this, is what I would say. But the open porches, I can't, I cannot agree with that, is even wanting to present it, because there's a lot of unintended consequences. First of all, the idea of striking the 250 square feet from the open porch for the front yard, the thing that's missing from here that some people may not realize is you can go five feet into the setback, front setback. So then we have all kinds of people who could be out of compliance. That passed in 2006. That's when that came forward, because we wanted to promote the idea of front porches. So what this also would do is, I have a front porch, if I wanted to, I could build another porch on top of that porch, and it wouldn't count. And I think that that would add to the bulk of size of houses, and I think that's not what we were really looking to do, so.
I agree with that. I mean, it's music to my ears, because when we first discussed this at the last meeting, I gave a few examples along those lines, so I'm very pleased at the direction that this is going.
So I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think that we weren't thinking through this when it was added.
Well, let me back up a step and also say that, first of all, I really appreciate Glenn's writing this memo to us, because it's, zoning regulations are very complicated, they're very technical, and it's always better to have it, you know, in plain English for all of our benefits. I actually attempted to do that as well about a month ago. I met with Matt about this, because I was planning to do a little Q and A for people. I wanted to be able to explain, and you know, the elevator speech, kind of why we're doing this, and what problem are we trying to solve? And then I was going to answer the question, "Does the proposed ordinance solve the problem? And if not, what should we do now?" And I only got as far as writing up the, what led to the problem, which I don't even have to read, because Lisa has stated that very well. That is essentially what my write-up said. I didn't get any further than that, because frankly, I concluded the ordinance did not solve the problem, and it in fact made it worse. So my feeling is, first of all, if we can go back to simply the issue that came up, the deck with railing concept and the definitions of that, and to mirror the interpretation before it was changed, was working fine. If we can go back and fix that, then I think we're done. But let me also point out a couple of, I mean, as much as I like your summary, Glenn, I have a few issues with it. One is that you say in the first paragraph that the public hearing, at that public hearing, will have the benefit of hearing thoughtful input from interested public through the public hearing process. While that is true, a public hearing is not a full public process. And on zoning issues especially, the last time we went through, and we had 18 public meetings before the public hearing, and then we ultimately had a referendum vote, which of course is the most democratic way of all to do it. So I too feel that the public hearing process is being a little rushed, but even more important than that, and this is where I think we need to go next, there's a line in here where you say, "It is difficult to quantify how the proposed ordinance will eventually translate to increased or decreased structural bulk in construction projects." If we can't quantify what our zoning ordinance means, we shouldn't be doing it. We have to be able to quantify what it means. And so I want to ask, you know, the building and licensing to, you know, that based on your experience the last few years, you know, give us an idea of what could happen, you know, if we continue looking at all these variables, but, you know, how much larger could a house or a hotel be? What about when commercial backs up to residential? What about larger developments like beach walk? And most importantly, can we not have separate criteria for commercial and residential? Does the code need to be the same for both? I do not think it does.
If I might say some things. Just, just to give a little bit more history, is the reason this came up initially was because of commercial, a couple of commercial situations in front of the Board of Adjustment. Number one being something that the Board of Adjustment actually overruled the building and licensing department about on at least one of these situations. And it's... And it's a subsurface parking area. So that's one thing in this code that I think we should seriously consider because the Board of Adjustment has already overruled it. And I'm sure they'll overrule it on another one coming. And so that's, you know, we are saying from the perspective of building, whether it's commercial or residential, we want cars to get off the street. And so how can we charge somebody for underground parking as gross floor area? So that's, the Board of Adjustment thought that as well. Simultaneously, in a commercial situation, the same thing came up about balconies. And in a commercial situation, the interpretation from the Building and Licensing was, this time around, I don't know about way in the past with hotels, was that balconies outside of a hotel room would be, I don't know if they're going to be 40 square feet, 50 square feet, 38 square feet, would be counted in gross floor area because there was a railing. It's not heated space, it's open except for a railing. And the building inspector interpreted a railing to be an exterior wall. When, I think it's when, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, you were there obviously, when the Board of Adjustment looked at it that way, they went with the building inspector and said, okay, balconies, decks, porches, a railing is a wall. And so all of those have to be part of gross floor area. Then that was thrown into a melee, if you will, to local builders and lawyers that all of a sudden said, whoa, 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 wait a minute. You're going to create a situation with all these residential things that all of a sudden, well, this interpretation is different. And we spoke to both of our building inspectors. And in the past, what's always been done in Rehoboth, it's not in the law, it's not separated from commercial or residential at all. And it's been interpreted from a residential perspective that railings, inside the railings doesn't count a gross floor area. Open porches above 250 square feet do count in gross floor area, but a deck with a railing does not above whatever. And so again, so the interpretation was all commercial this way and residential this way. And then within the last couple of months, it was, okay, commercial, residential, the exact same. A railing is a wall. And that's, those are the things that we tried to adjust. And I think, again, going back to the subsurface parking, I think that's an easy thing. Because the Board of Adjustment. But then it comes down to this outdoor space. Now, is a railing a wall? I don't think so, but that's me personally. Is a balcony, is that a heated space? Not even close, but it's part of the hotel. Now, would I like to see a new hotel on Baltimore Avenue just flat face? No. I would like to see the hotels around town similar to the hotels that are already there with allowing balconies because that's a nice feature for the hotel, but it's aesthetically pleasing. Same thing with front porches. When the zoning code was changed to allow 250 square feet exemption on open porches a long time ago, it was because the FAR was pushing people to build boxes and take advantage of the space that they had. And, you know, front porches got a little bit dropped by the wayside. And so the fear was, hey, they're going to be dropped by the wayside. You know, everybody talks about character in Rehoboth. Well, character in Rehoboth, in my mind, is a nice front porch. Now, there's a lot of great porches around town that are 500, 700 square feet, but you don't see that since the new FAR. You see the 250 because people want to use it for the interior. And so, you know, from my perspective, the way I looked at this was, I don't see somebody putting in a 500 square foot open porch because it takes up their green space or lot coverage, stuff like that. But I agree, maybe the way we're supposed to do it is completely separate commercial from residential and then just keep residential exactly the way it is, interpret a railing as a railing. And 250 square feet, if you want to add more of a porch, you can't. In gross floor area, put in the subsurface parking. And then we got to talk about the balconies. Because the way I look at the balcony situation, I look at the balcony situation very similar to the 250 square feet that we give in a residential situation. If we allow our FAR 3,000 square feet of a building in a residential, and we allow 250 square feet as an exemption. Okay, so that's about 8%, okay? In a hotel, they're building one 30,000 square feet, why don't we allow them the same exemption of 8%? That's 2,400 square feet. Well, he's got 50 or 60 rooms, 60 rooms at 40 square feet on the deck, on the balcony, that's the same as residential. I would rather see balconies than a front face, but that's me personally. So there are three things to think about. It's the subsurface, which I think has been, and then the balconies, and then the open porches residential, the pergola things, you know, we can add. But that's, sorry about the long dissertation.
Yeah, I think incentive for balconies is better than not having balconies. I agree that we don't want a flat front hotel. How they might be counted, if you don't, if you make them maybe perhaps a maximum, maybe you don't want huge balconies off the hotel.
Oh, no, no.
But small, maybe a French balcony, maybe a little bit.
French balconies, and then it's the railing, so you get the aesthetics, but you're not really adding bulk.
Right.
I had an apartment in New York with a French balcony. It's about four square feet, right? And one person can stand there, and most of them aren't. You know, a balcony to me in one of these hotels is a couple of people sitting in a chair looking out on the streetscape.
But multiplied over 50 rooms, that's a public gathering space. You know, I've talked to building license about the fact that that's one of the reasons why commercial would be looked at differently. It's a public gathering space, it's not your home.
It's a public gathering space if everybody's in the same space.
But there's the potential for that.
Yeah, if you had two people in each of those 50 rooms, yeah, there'd be 100 people. But they're spread out pretty far. It's just like if you had 100 people spread out over three lots where the hotel was going to be three or four lots. But everybody's different.
I can understand why these have come up because, I mean, there haven't been, the only hotel that I know of that's been built in the last few years was the Avenue Inn, right? I mean, well, that was before. But, and the Avenue Inn, you know, that's an example that Planning Commission loves to use because it came in with two plans, and the Planning Commission liked the plan that wasn't code compliant and encouraged them to get a variance. And I will say, one of the variances they got was the underground parking, by the way. So now that's been, you know, talked about enough that I think that's a given. The other two variances they got were, compared to this, seemed pretty minor. One was for encroachment of an overhanging roof, and the other was for a stair hall because it was much safer to have two, and our code only allowed one. So, but they have 28 rooms that have balconies. So they were able to do the balconies, I mean, you know. So I don't, I am reluctant to do something that completely throws the code out the window when we have actually had a hotel built that was able to get variances for aesthetics and to make it better, but to still stick to the bulk that we...
Were the balconies included in gross floor area?
I think they were.
I don't know if they were, and I've asked the question.
I think they were.
Building inspectors don't know.
Could, do you mind standing up and tell us who you are and...
Well, I'll wait though.
Yes. Okay, yeah. My understanding was that the FAR it ended up with was a little over three, like 3.1. Right, but that the total FAR was 3.3, and that most of that was attributable to the underground parking. I don't know. So.
Anybody else?
I, I'll just throw my two cents in. I think for me, it's difficult to wrap around my head around us making these changes and including or excluding certain things when the whole point of this was, what's the, what is the definition of an exterior wall? And instead of defining what an exterior wall is, which is what brought us where a difference of interpretation on what the definition of that word is, instead of defining that, we've created something else. And if we just define what an exterior wall is, obviously there's unintended consequences with that as well. It just seems, it seemed like that was the logical place to start with defining the term that was in question.
Okay, so let's look at that. And what is your definition of an exterior wall? If you don't mind my...
Yeah, sure, in insulated...
Okay, so, bless you. Basically, temperature-controlled space. That's, would be something within a wall, exterior wall.
Right.
Okay, so non-exterior wall would be a railing, in your mind?
Correct.
Okay, so what does that do with a balcony? Balcony doesn't have a wall, it's going to have, you know, slats.
Yeah, no, agreed. I would not include a balcony in the floor area ratio.
All right, now, same thing, an open porch that has slats, it's got a roof. Maybe there's a deck on top, the deck on top would be exempt. But, and say the balcony is 500 square feet. Right now, the way the code is, even with that railing, and tell me if I'm wrong, if it's 500 square feet, 250 goes towards your gross floor area, right? Yeah, 250 exempt, 250 would have to be part of the floor. What are your thoughts there?
Again, I would not call a railing...
A wall.
A wall. And if someone wants to have a porch and take up green space or their lot coverage, then that's what they're doing.
I agree with you. But I agree though that maybe there's, if we put a definition of what an exterior wall is in, then we're going to have the next question of how much, like for a porch or a balcony, that we allow. You know, because we can put in a definition of an exterior wall is not a railing, but do you all interpret anything behind a railing as gross floor area? I think you do today, not in the past in residential. But today, you think of anything behind a railing as gross floor area. If we made a definition of exterior wall to not include railing, does it still count for gross floor area?
I, it all, we'll go with whatever language.
Oh, I know, I know you will. I'm asking for your professional experience.
We're not the fighters in this, we're just defending what the code said. But, you know, Matt and I, we have talked a lot about this. And it's, and I'm giving you an example of when they adopted floor area ratios back in 40, 50, and much has not changed then. It's the community has to decide what is going to count, what is going to be excluded.
Okay.
And we'll be happy.
Oh, I know, and I appreciate that.
This is why it's not just an easy fix. Because Dom interpreted the code the way he did with railings being an exterior wall. Matt had a different interpretation, with the exception of when it is covered, correct? A porch, it could have a railing, because it's covered, counts. If there's no roof over it and it still has a railing, doesn't count. Where in the code does it say that if there's a roof over it and it's open space, that it counts?
Look at the building, look at the definition of building. What is a building? And it says, it can be roof.
It can.
But it doesn't have to. So you've got to go to the definition.
Okay. So that's my point on why this isn't an easy fix. Part of it is...
That's not in the code though, right?
That's in the code.
It is in the code.
It is in the code.
Yeah, definition.
Well, also the definition of a porch is different. It talks about screening and so forth.
Yes, an open porch can have screening.
An open porch. So there is a separate definition for that with screens. So I do think that we need to separate out the commercial versus the residential, but...
Which he's done in here, which I think is good.
Which is good, yeah.
But I think we have to look at those three things and say... And again, an easy fix here is, yeah, say yes to the...
Subsurface parking, yeah. I think we're all agreeable on that.
Keep in the 250.
Right.
And the balconies is kind of a...
Wait, we're still not addressing the main, to me, one of the main reasons we started this is because of the resident. Is what you're saying, would that solve the problem of the change in the counting of the floor?
It would basically be the residential as it is now. 250 exemption for a porch, anything bigger, no. I would say decks are excluded as they were.
Have been in the past. I want to add that to what you're saying.
Can I ask the city solicitor a question? Here's where we're going to have a problem. Because what the Board of Adjustment agreed to, that Dom's interpretation of an exterior wall and a railing counts as that. That's what the Board of Adjustment upheld twice. Now, we're talking about making other changes that may work, but it doesn't change the fact of what the Board of Adjustment upheld, and that's his definition, or his interpretation of what an exterior wall is. Is that not correct?
I think that's right. The question really is up here, because you're the policymakers. Whatever the Board of Adjustment has done at this point, whatever determinations have been made at Building and Licensing at this point, you have a clean slate. You get to make any determination you want as to what an exterior wall is. So does anybody up here want a railing to be called an exterior wall under your zoning ordinance?
No.
No.
No. And that goes back to our original discussion. That's where we started this.
So hold on one second. Does that mean we put in a definition of an exterior wall to not include a railing? Or just, hey, this is the way you're supposed to interpret? I mean, I think we have to put something in.
At this point, I don't think you can do a policy directive because the Board of Adjustment has spoken. So I think you need to codify something to clarify that exterior wall does not mean railing.
A definition would suffice.
A definition or perhaps something in this paragraph that defines gross floor area that makes abundantly clear that exterior wall does not include railing. I'm not sure exactly what the language is.
I don't want to take the risk of making the code even more ambiguous than it already is. And I think we should, we do need to go beyond just the definitions and have a chart or something in there that basically says, this is included, these elements are included, these elements are not included. To go beyond, because just the definition is creating all of this uncertainty, and I'm not sure we can ever get there by definition alone.
Agreed, but my point is if we don't, if we don't define what the interpretation was, in question was already, it's not going to change anything. We can't say now, you know, we're going to change it and just make it commercial is this and residential is this. What the Board of Adjustment upheld was his interpretation of the definition of exterior wall. So if we don't change that, I don't see how we can move beyond.
I think we have consensus here that we all agree that a railing is not a wall. So whether that's taken care of in the definition or somewhere else in this ordinance, it doesn't matter to me, as long as it's clear.
Dom, did you have something you wanted to add? Not anymore, okay.
Well, you know, going back to one of the things Lisa said initially was to put off having, you know, this needs more study and to put off a public hearing. Because I think that the two bodies that know our zoning code the best really need to weigh in. And I've talked, the Planning Commission talked about this last Friday. They had a really interesting discussion about it, and they were going to put it on their agenda for their March meeting. And they didn't because they had the sense that the timing was such that there wasn't time for them to do that. And I think we need to give them time to do that. I mean, every other time, there's been a zoning issue, including last year, when we were looking at that, making that exception for clear space, there was a resolution to give it to the Planning Commission. And I think, you know, we should do that again. And even, possibly even get the Board of Adjustment's input, although we have their decision, so we may have their input already. But I can't answer the question, sitting here, of whether that's a good enough fix about the railing because they've seen it all, and I can only guess.
Well, again, the Board of Adjustment basically upheld the building inspector's decision on what a wall was because that's what the building inspector said. Whereas with the Board of Adjustment... Whereas with the Board of Adjustment, with the subsurface parking, thought, you know, that's absurd that we're asking people to get cars off the street, but we're penalizing them. So I think that's, that's what it was. If, for example, we came in and said, okay, a definition of an exterior wall is a railing, is not a railing, I think the Board of Adjustment's fine with it. I don't think.
That's true, okay, so the Planning Commission's really is the one that we need to hear from, and they've had a fantastic discussion.
Well, even, even the Planning Commission, you know, I look at it from the perspective of, I don't think I've ever heard of anybody, even back when we were doing the FAR, thinking that a railing was an exterior wall. I think it's just an interpretation of, of a certain building inspectors, and, and everybody's a little bit different. And, because I, I think if we went back over the years in the past, five, you know, 10, 20 years with the hotels that are actually in place, I would suggest that we could probably find out that most of the balconies weren't part of the FAR.
That would be interesting to know.
But, again, the FAR came in '06, so a lot of those hotels were already there.
Yeah.
So if you did just, you took our definition, I don't see definitions for exterior wall, I do see a definition for wall. I mean, I mean, what we're, again, we're trying to solve one thing right now, I, I think that, because a lot of these other, other components of, of this draft ordinance have a lot of ripple effects that really have to be part of a broader look at our code, so, I mean, if you just simply added to, I know none of this is simple, okay, I'm just saying, if you added a bullet point to our definitional wall, I mean, everywhere you look on definitional wall, it's, it's, you know, it's something that, it's a continuous vertical brick or stone structure. I mean, almost every definitional wall. That's not how we define it, though, we don't add that definition. If, if we were able to just clarify what a definitional wall is based on what a traditional definition of a wall is, then perhaps that would solve the immediate problem, which is that we're including decks and balconies.
Are you, are you including temperature-controlled as part of that definition?
Um, well, if it's a brick or stone structure that is continuous, you know, to, you know, kind of a, another, you know, brick or, or other, so then.
And, and the reason I say that, though, although I think I'm hearing that we don't wanna change the code for porches, right?
That's right.
Okay, because, all right, because I, I had been concerned that if we did that, we're really opening up a can of worms.
We are, because there's setback requirement.
Well, not only that.
Things that are waived and.
But I'm not sure what people realize, if you have a, first of all, open porch in our code is defined with, with a screen, even though we don't normally think of that as open, but our code considers even a screen porch to be open. You can put the three season, like Easy Breeze windows in, and it's still considered an open porch. So you don't get, that does not count against your gross floor area if you put the, the windows in.
Up to 250 feet.
Right, yeah, but no, well.
Not beyond 250 is.
Right, okay, yes. But, to think, from a practical standpoint, we're, you know, as a summer resort, the temperature control part is less meaningful, because people are, I mean, we hang out, we have every meal on our porch in, in nice weather. And they become three-season rooms with the windows, and the whole reason, I mean, I, I looked on Easy Breeze site just because I was curious how they defined it, and they say very clearly that patio windows are the best way to extend your living space. So I think we have to include it as living space, whether, you know, and if we give the two, the same 250 incentive, I think that's good. You know, we've done that, so there's no reason to change that, but I, and I think we have to be careful about.
It's only for the front, though, you realize that.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that's fine, too, because that's, that's part of the look.
I wouldn't change that, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it, but that's why, but that's why the temperature control aspect comes in, because if you don't, you, they would be, they would not count if you, if you had that as part of your wall, if you need the temperature control and closed space, then you run into this problem.
So, so I, I think what we're trying to, I think, what we're trying to accomplish, again, is, is that we want an appropriate definition of, of wall that doesn't change a practice that we've had in place for, for many, many years, number one, but number two, we, our intent is not to change lot coverage or exclude lot coverage requirements, et cetera, as part of this change. That's not the intent, so people can come in and, and build a deck, you know, property owners cannot, our intent is not to have them be able to build a deck that covers their entire lot, because those other, you know, components of the code still apply. I don't know, that's just, I think what we're trying to, to really get down to.
Lot coverage, setback, green space.
Yeah, it all still applies.
That all still applies.
We're not intending to change.
Homeowner flexibility, yeah, with, with.
So, so the things we all agree on is the subsurface parking area.
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't count. Now, it says outdoor areas, including open porches, we gotta cross open porches out.
Right.
And keep the 250.
Right.
That we had.
Thank you. That went off the whole paragraph, yeah, that was crossed out.
Yeah, that whole thing comes out.
Decks and patios do not count towards gross floor area at this point in time. Is that true, gentlemen?
Right.
For residents?
They do, right now, they do count today.
Yeah, so.
You don't want them to count.
You don't want them to count.
As has been the practice, even when the, the previous FAR was approved.
All right, so, basically, what we write in this one is, outdoor areas, including decks.
Right.
Patios do not count towards a gross floor area, do they, or yes?
Only lot coverage.
Only lot coverage, so, decks, patios.
Patio with a railing doesn't count, under the new Board of Adjustment?
They have a railing.
Pergolas, no, they don't count, they're just an outbuilding. Now, the balconies.
They do, 'cause they're covered.
They do count, actually.
They do, 'cause they're covered. They're considered covered.
I'd ask them, but I.
They've got railings, and they're open.
Yeah, but right now, they count them as quarter-year covered.
Gross floor area, pergola does?
It, it, it counts as attached.
How about a, a shed?
Only if it's attached, is that what you said?
No, I'm saying one that's sitting out in the middle of my yard.
Sitting out.
It's, it's, it's passing on the height and, and, and coverage.
Lot coverage.
Anything, you got a pergola, what is, anything over six foot that has a roof, counts as a part of the FAR.
Even my shed where my lawn mower is, okay, so pergolas get crossed out.
Well, unless we want to exclude pergolas.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't hear anything about.
Attached pergolas is what the intent was when I asked about that, to be in there.
I think it's both.
I think it's both?
Yeah.
And now, so.
As long as lot coverage.
All right, I think we've accomplished something here.
Got it.
We don't have the definition in here, but that's something we gotta talk about. How about the balconies?
See, I don't, I don't, I think the balconies ought to be counted.
But, but again, if, if in residential, we're giving an exemption.
Yeah, we could think about that.
Because of the aesthetics.
Yep.
How about we give the exemption for hotels, for the aesthetics?
Open to that, I, I really would like to know, I don't know if there's records going back to, for some of the hotel, I would really like to know if the balconies were previously counted, I would really like to know that.
But again, I think most of the hotels in existence now, except for Hotel Rehoboth in the avenue.
Still, that's enough, that's, that's evidence, I mean, those, that'd be good to know on those, but, and I, I don't disagree with the idea of an incentive, but I would wanna, I would wanna think about those numbers, and I would wanna hear from building and licensing on what that would mean before, but I think it's, I think it's certainly worth considering.
All right, balconies are in flex, flux.
I would put them in, and then we're gonna go through public feedback.
Right, since I think we don't have a consensus on that item, put it in for public feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I would say.
And for planning commission feedback.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, so, how about the definition? What do you think, Mr. Stevens?
Well, I think it's a difficult definition, but, but the best one I've seen, oddly, since we've been sitting here, it talks about an exterior wall being a wall that has one of its surfaces on the outside of a building. If both of its surfaces are on the outside, it's an, it's not a exterior wall, it's an outdoor wall. If only one, if both of its surfaces are on the interior of a building, it's not an exterior wall, it's an interior wall. So where it has one surface on the outside and one surface on the inside, that's an exterior wall. So, we could maybe work with that to get to a definition that.
I, I know the International Building Code has definition for exterior wall. A wall bearing or non-bearing that is used as an enclosing wall for a building other than a firewall, and that has a slope of 60 degrees or greater with a horizontal plane, and I think it also has to include an exterior wall covering on one side, which is a material or assembly of materials applied on the exterior side of an exterior wall for the purpose of providing a weather-resistant barrier, barrier insulation, or for aesthetics, including but not limited to veneer siding, exterior installation, insulation, finished systems, architectural trim, embellishments, et cetera.
That's a lot.
That's the International Building Code.
Didn't we already adopt the International Building Code?
Yeah.
Therefore, then, we adopted that definition of wall.
Well, we have a.
Right?
I just, I think be careful of that, because, you know, this is a zone, this is a zoning issue, and I like the definition of zoning, 'cause, I mean, I, I think the way we got to a railing being a wall is by looking to the building code, so.
Okay, all right, so.
Just, to be clear, if we do have a definition for exterior wall, porches would still be counted because they're over six foot and have a roof, correct?
No, open porches, are you talking about open porches?
Open porches.
Open porches, there's a definition in the code that talks about screening, and that they're not temperature-controlled. That's, I think, the main, is that right?
It would still count towards the gross floor area, because.
Above 250.
Above, above 250, yeah.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're defining an exterior wall and not counting it towards gross floor area, what then would include a front porch into the FAR with the exclusion of the 250? That's my question for building and licensing.
That, that's actually a very good question, it's a very interesting one, because that's what's created a lot of the confusion here.
I, I know, so if we define exterior wall and we want to include porches, we just need to make sure that that mechanism is there.
Right.
So that's my question to building and licensing, what then would include a porch in the gross floor area?
So, historically, if the front porch had any kind of living space above it, I'm sorry. Historically, if, if a front porch had any kind of living space above it, the space below it is going to count as floor area ratio. The, the deck above it will not, obviously, count. But then the rest of the space of that porch would be counted as the 250 exclusion.
But by definition of the code, if it's just no living space above, just a roof that comes out, screened and porch below, you would not count that.
For a front porch only. So if it was on the rear, it would count as, as floor area ratio.
But what, what definition in the code would make you count that?
The 250 rule basically says, for a front porch only, you can have 250 square feet credit if it's an open porch.
I understand.
So 500, if you have 500.
Solicitor, do you understand what I'm, I'm getting at?
So here's, right, this, this is what's created the, the immense amount of confusion in the code, is because the exclusion for the open front porches that was put in sort of at the last minute, we were talking about gross floor area being everything that's interior, right? So everything that's in the interior spaces is gross floor area. So presumably, an outdoor porch would not have counted as gross floor area, but then at the last minute, we threw in this exclusion that said, however, you get, you get up to 250 square feet of a free, open front porch.
We put in an exclusion that doesn't include it.
Exclusion from something that was already excluded.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the, really, the problem that created a lot of this.
So then, we need to, we define exterior wall, and we either take out the, the 250, or if everyone wants to keep it in, we include front porches with a roof into the floor area.
Right.
The floor area ratio.
Right, I agree with that.
We can't just, we can't just add a definition and the exclusion if there's nothing that's going to include it into the, into the FAR.
Right, but to take it one step further, I think everybody's saying that they'd like to see all porches included in gross floor area, however, if it's an open front porch, because we wanna encourage front porches, we'll give 250 square feet exclusion.
Agreed, agreed, I think everyone's on the same page.
That's right.
We just need another step here to make sure that the front porches are included, so we can exclude the 250.
Right, right.
For the front porch.
That's why I think it would be nice to have a chart that sort of clarifies, you know, what's in, what's out.
I'm so excited if somebody else sees that now.
Dom, given, given the circumstances, say if we say, and it, it seems like the consensus up here is that a railing is not an exterior wall, just say, we agree on it, and we force you. What does that do for your interpretation for a hotel's balcony?
If it's not, if railing is not an exterior wall.
Yes.
The question then becomes is, are we excluding balconies as structures?
Right, right, right.
Are we excluding balconies as structures? Because the language under two, on this section, the section, paragraph five says that you calculate all structures, building and structures. Okay, so whether you take a wall, whatever, it's, is, I mean, there's a distinct separation between commercial, what's permitted in commercial and what's permitted in, or is counted, I would say is counted for FAR in commercial, what's excluded, and what's, basically, is as a whole, anything that's a building and structure under the definition of structures, is counted as part, part of the FARs.
In commercial.
In commercial.
And, and it is different in residential, so we do, we do have some differences.
It's different for residential, that's why you have all those exclusions.
Right, right, okay.
Under, under the residential.
We already do have a difference, that's good to know, yeah.
Okay.
I pro, I, I promise to Sharon Lynn, I won't speak anymore.
None of them. As, as far as our path forward.
Just one question, though, if, if the definition, are you saying the definition of structure is different between commercial and residential?
No, no, it's no different.
That's what I thought.
It's just that included, the structures are included in commercial.
The structures are, yeah, you gotta look, you gotta.
The exterior wall part, that's the problem.
Yeah, but, but if you look at the exterior part, if you go back, see, you, you really gotta, it's, it's almost as a maze, you gotta go back between definitions. If you look at a, begin with accessory, what is an accessory building? An accessory building says, anything that's attached, then you go to the definition, what is a building? It says it's a structure, then you go to the structure, and, and it, and it basically outlined everything that constitutes a structure. So, if you, if you follow this scenario, you have a house, a residential house, you add a deck that's attached, one of the walls is attached, and whether you have a railing or not, that starts, that's, becomes part of your FAR calculation, whether it's on the first.
A deck?
A deck, if it's attached, one of the walls is attached, and that's in your.
Even though it has no roof on it?
That's right, it doesn't have a roof, that constitutes. Now, what, what happened in the past, and where we got into this dilemma was, the practice was, if it wasn't roof, then it wouldn't count as FAR, but if you look under the definition of what is a building, it says it can be roof or not roof. Now, you go back, and then you go back again to the structure, what is a building? It's a structure. So, you, you have to go through all those scenarios in order to create, now, the, the issue came about, is a railing a wall? Is a railing a wall? Well, you looked at the definition of, of what is a wall, and it could be of any material, it doesn't say it has to be of stone or metal, it could be, it could be a, a paper mache, and, and it's still.
It doesn't say anything about.
Height.
The height or anything.
No, it doesn't say, it doesn't distinguish that, and that's, that's the challenge that we have. I mean, we, I welcome modernizing the code, I welcome that, but, I mean, there's, there's, there's gonna be a lot of more work that I foresee than just, just what you have before you tonight.
I think we're looking at someone to rewrite our zoning code anyway, so, yeah, we.
Could you come up here?
Yeah.
Please.
Well, Vince Robertson, so I'm, I'm certainly involved in the hotel, and I'm also a property owner in town, so I'm sort of wearing two hats on this. On the one hand, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised we're talking about excluding porches, but whatever. I think you all hit it on the head about the exterior wall and whether railing is the issue or not. I apologize, Mr. Mullin, but I don't even know what you just tried to explain, because the definition in your code, you know, he talks about structures count and all this, and buildings and whatever. The code says that floor area gross is the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors, several floors of a building measured from the exterior face of the exterior walls. There's a qualifier. That, and that's what we're hung up with, and that's what, um, Mr. Chenisky was talking about, is we need to come up with what an exterior wall is, because that qualifier is already in our code. We don't need to overcomplicate this. It's, it's just, it's as simple as the conversation I think you all just had a second ago, you know? And it's spun itself just phenomenally out of control here, and we're in a place where, you know, we're talking about all these different things, and it's really, you know, the code's pretty clear, I think, you know? It just, we got this sort of cockeyed understanding of what exterior wall meant, and that's led us down this path where we are now. And, you know, we were right there with your conversation a second ago, you know, in terms of really narrowing this down, I think. So I ju- I had to say that because it was spooling out of control again based on...
I don't think, I don't think that's changed. I think we all pretty basically feel that the railing is not a wall, and the description...
Right.
Of the wall, well, somebody, I guess from the, um, international code is...
Yeah.
Good enough.
No, and I don't disagree with that, but we just heard Mr. Molina say that it's, it has nothing to do with the walls. It's the whole structure, and...
Well, I think that was something different.
Let me clarify that.
I would say he had this argument before the Board of Adjustment and, and was not successful. So, I mean...
I don't disagree with that. You know, we're also gonna, well, they're all stopped there.
Do you understand what needs, what, what can, Glenn? Do you, do you have a proposal, I mean, on how we can resolve the, the root issue that brought us all here to this discussion today?
No. Yeah, I was with you. No, I mean, I, I mean, I think I have a sense of what pretty much you all want counted and don't want counted. I'm not sure I have the perfect ordinance language to correct it. Cause, and, and, and let me just kind of try to explain what, why I say that, because Vince just read the definition of gross floor area, right? Talks about exterior wall, exterior wall. But then if you go down in the commercial portion of the sections below it, it says in all commercial districts, the floor area ratio for all buildings or structures shall not exceed. So that's where Mr. Molina says it specifically references buildings or structures. So doesn't gross floor area then mean not just buildings, but also structures which can be a deck someplace else or, or whatever on the lot?
Ooh, it's a structure, right?
So, so that's where a lot of this starts to get very convoluted. I, I mean, I asked the question about whether you want a wall to be included, a railing to be included as a wall, because to me, I, I think it comes down to something as simple as that. If you get, if you say a railing is not a wall, then when you get to, when you read the definition and it says it's the exterior face of the exterior walls, to me, it's almost a stop there and say, okay, every time I look at a space, I say, is it inside of an exterior wall? If it is, I count it. If it isn't, I don't count it. It gets a little bit funky with the discussion about porches, because that's, that's the one exterior space that you all have made clear that you want included. Um, so, so that, I think, is something that we can deal with. But if, but if you all say to me, to, to measure gross flare, floor area, I go stand on the spot, and if I say in my mind, I'm in an interior space, and that should be, therefore should be counted, and you say to me, outside of that, the only other thing I want counted is open porches, except for a 250 square foot exclusion for front porches, I can write that.
Good.
Yeah.
I don't know how we got into all this other, when that's...
Yeah, where we are, yeah.
I think that's where we started.
All right. Now, so the path forward, he, he says he can write this.
Yes.
All right.
He says...
Do we put this on for further discussion at the workshop, but do we set the resolution for a month from now to have a public hearing, or do we put the public hearing off until we have three more conversations about this?
It's up to you all. It's kind of nice in my mind to get a placeholder for the public hearing, because you're gonna have an opportunity to hear at your workshop, and if you think you're not ready, you can yank the pu- the public hearing, of course.
I agree with that. So go ahead and schedule the public hearing.
So it basically says that we should schedule a public hearing for the March meeting?
Public comment.
Yeah, we could.
I, I know. I'll, I'll be right with you.
So with, with an updated...
Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously, at the, the March 9th meeting, we'll discuss a new draft of something from Mr. Mendelis.
And it'll be a public hearing, and we can decide to change it or whatever.
Okay, here's, here's the thing. Here's the, here's what I think that most people in the community have reacted to in terms of setting the public hearing. It isn't just the speed, although the speed with which this is going is pretty, pretty good, pretty quick. Um, it was the fact that it was, you know, the winter when a lot of people are away. And I think for, for the fact that a lot of people are away this time of year, and I would count in that January, February, and March, we can look no further than this Board of Commissioners who didn't even have a quorum here to have a February workshop. So if the city leaders aren't in town in the winter, I don't know why we're expecting the public to be in town in the winter. And frankly, more people paid attention to this than I thought would, because more people were, were interested in the topic. That is the main reason why I think March is a bad timeframe. I just don't think it gives the, it gives enough time to educate the public as to what the possibilities are so that they can weigh in.
That, that may be true. Can I, can I just say, though, that, that, that I think it's unfair, some of the comments that have been made by the public about we're trying to rush this during the wintertime when nobody's here. What brought this to light truly was Board of Adjustment applications that were filed when they were filed, and now there's real litigation concerns that, that people are up against time to file appeals to those Board of Adjustment things. So it has absolutely nothing to do with the time of the year. It has everything to do with the Board of Adjustment applications that were filed.
But why, why would we give it, I mean, you know, all that, all that does is, is an incentive. Talk about incentives. That's an incentive for anybody who doesn't, who doesn't, can't do what they want to do to threaten sue the city and we'll just change the code. I mean...
No, I don't think that, I don't think that's correct. I, I, I think that, that to the extent that the Board of Adjustment applications have identified an issue that you all want to, to clarify, and if it's truly something you want to clarify...
Yeah.
Then, then you should do it...
Yeah.
In the interest of not having litigation expenses.
Well, yeah.
You might, on the other hand, say, no, 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 this is exactly the way we want, the way we want the code interpreted.
Yeah, and we will say it.
And we will fight that in court and, and go after it.
And it looks like what we're doing is going toward a sort of a hybrid on that, right? Where we're, where we're clarifying some things the way they are and potentially changing some things. I mean, I, I don't disagree with timeliness in the sense that I don't think it needs to drag on 18 public meetings like the last zoning change, but I do think March is a problem.
Well, I mean, the, the way I look at it, we've been talking about it for a number of months. It's been there. The Board of Adjustment had the cases. Um, here are some changes. I think all of us up here, the majority of us feel with those type of changes, this is fine. Again, we're up here, we were voted into office to make hard decisions. And I'm not saying, hey, let's not share it with the public. We're sharing it with the public. If this is up on there, uh, people are watching right now. People have access to the, the city website. And again, if we hear from a crowd here at the, uh, at the public hearing, we just put it off. And, and my feeling is, if we have something written up by Glenn by the, uh, March, uh, workshop, and then we have a public hearing, I don't necessarily say we have the vote at the public hearing. We may have the vote the next voting meeting, but I think the public hearing, we should set it so the public can say more about it. Unfortunately, today, a, a number of the people have had to leave.
Right. And so they haven't even had the first opportunity, and now they're having what's essentially the last opportunity.
No, I don't think it is the last opportunity, right?
It's not the last opportunity.
The public hearing is, isn't it?
No.
No.
No, we don't have to vote at the public hearing.
In fact, let's say we don't vote.
Well...
Personally.
Everybody may be on the same page, and, and the group out here may say, oh, we had our facts wrong. We're fine.
Well, the, the formal public hearing, I think, sends a message that it's, it's just about finished. In fact, I think I've heard Glenn say before that if we, if you make changes at the public hearing, or after the public hearing, you have to have another public hearing, right?
Depending. If you, if you take more, the way I usually view it is if you're taking more property rights away with those changes, then you should have another public hearing. If you're giving more public property rights...
So almost by definition, it is the last step of the process. That's all I'm getting at. You know, it's, it's whatever, it's what message you're sending to, to people, to public involvement.
I think one of the things that we have done today, at least I have, um, as this has gone forward with all of the time we've taken on this, um, is that we have had a lot of input...
Yeah.
The last couple of weeks. And a lot of that input, to me, has, has really said, don't mess with the code in terms of green space, setback.
And that wasn't in here. That was never a part of the discussion.
But that's been a lot of the feedback.
Oh, oh, no question.
And we have, and we're not doing that.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not impacting those.
In fact, we actually are making our current practice compliant with the code that was voted on by referendum. We've gotten away from that because of current interpretation. So we're taking it back to the way it was when we had the referendums. That's what we're trying to do.
Except for a couple of things, like the...
Well, a couple, yeah, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
There's still a question about the balconies.
Sorry, I'm still thinking about my narrow issue, but you're, you're right. You're, fair enough, fair enough. Yes, you're right.
So, does that lead me to believe that we should be setting, the next step to go to be in a moment, um, would be to set the, the resolution to set the public hearing for March 20th? Does that sound...
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, please. Uh, that one I'd prefer.
Jan Conacy, 42 Oak Avenue. Um, my other fellow board member from Rehoboth Homeowners' Association has already left. Um, but first of all, um, you know, you've got a letter from us. I'm speaking right now as an, as a board member of RBHA. And, you know, our big concern is, even on our board, several of our board members, and we don't have that many, will be gone the whole month of March. Many people leave this town who have made it through the winter and take off for March. And the request from us was to hold the meeting in April, so I will reiterate that request. The other request was, in our letter, why are we hearing about these things at the last minute? The jolly trolley, the, um, uh, this, and I can't remember the third, and I've been here too long.
I beg to differ. The jolly trolley's been, we've been talking about that for more than 18 months. This issue started back in July or June. So...
Okay.
I take issue with that, that we just started talking about this.
But, but one of the things that I've, I've mentioned before, um, and I know Sharon knows I have, and that is about communication. The expectation that citizens will go to the city website to find out what's going wrong, or what's going on, is entirely wrong.
So why do we have it?
You push things out, just like Amazon, just like Facebook. I get a zillion emails from Facebook every day, and I'm not even on Facebook. Um, you push it out to a peak interest. Why does the state police and the, and the Sussex County Emergency use Nextdoor? There are 900 members in downtown Rehoboth on Nextdoor. Most of them don't comment, but they read it. My, my issue is, is that you need to push out, and, and on RBHA, we're gonna be doing better, a lot better, at pushing things out to our members in a timely manner. And, and...
And this, this note that you sent to us the other day, you did not send it to your members, did you?
Uh, not yet. The constant contact, um, I don't know if it went out or not, frankly, Paul. It did. The constant contact went out. I, I don't know if it did. I'm not the one who sends it.
But it will be within the next day or so.
Yeah.
So, it's out there.
So the other thing that I wanted to tell you was, I agree with Paul about the, um, about the open porches. And, um, that was a big shock to me when I seen what's happened to open porches. And today, I learned how to take a picture with my camera and then go to CVS and have them print it for me. And I wanted to share with you all, a porch on my street, it doesn't look like the 250 square feet of open front porch, because it has a wall up halfway, and that has three windows across the front and two down the sides. They look like real windows, but they're plastic. And when several neighbors asked why that allowed to be a front porch, the, the question was, well, they were gonna do it anyway, so, you know. Um, to me, that's not a good reason. It's a lovely house, and I don't know the people, and I don't know if that's heated or not. But I was in another front porch, and when you were talking earlier about the 250 feet and how difficult that is, I totally agree with you, Paul. It was meant to be open, welcoming Rehoboth. But Mike, another friend of ours, took their 250 feet, added more to it. It is a heated space. I was just in it last week. Front porch, 250 feet is free. The rest of it, which is at least another 250, is not free. It's heated, and it has even better than those plastic windows. It has these things that you push a button and they come down, and they're very fancy and nice, and it's really a sunroom. So it, it gets, it does stick out on the front of the house. But if you're looking at everything, really think about what you want the front porch to be. And as Paul said at the beginning, it, it, that's the intent, was that it was an open porch. And I, I forgot that it even had screens on it. But, but we need to enforce what we intend. And, um, and I really hope you will look at communication again and see, can we improve our communication out to our residents? We will do what we can do at RBHA, but, and we will give people links to go on the city website and see stuff. But that jolly trolley survey was, was a good example. Until somebody put out a flyer and put it on Nextdoor, nobody had taken the survey. They didn't even know it was there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to two things, um, related to this? At one, um, I, I think, again, back to facts, like on, on, on jolly trolley, never in the budget, never. So I just want to underscore that again. And there was no action taken. I mean, we had a survey sent out, I mean, and we got feedback and we had public discussion. So I, I just don't know how that was gotten lost. And to Jan's point, maybe it wa- I, I clearly think we needed better communication. I agree with that.
It is a matter of perception, because of course, nothing's in the budget until March 20th when we vote.
That's what I just said. That's what I just, you know, I agree that we, the communication could have been right better.
But it wasn't even, it was, I, I remember the discussion about jolly trolley, because I remember I was coming up with some questions and I was getting a lot of, a pushback. And the, the, I would have felt the same way had I been sitting in the audience. That day, we were talking about it, every, you know, several people up here were gung ho, wanted to do it now. And I, so it does not surprise me that people thought it was gonna end up in the budget. How could you not after that?
Okay, that's, that's a fair point on a different perspective. Thank you for both you. Um, but, but I, I have to say, I, I'm not clear why we, I mean, we got a, a formal letter from the homeowners association to try to, to have this public hearing in, in April. Why, why not have it the first week of April? I mean, you're only talking about a couple of weeks. I, it just...
It would be like the third week of April. Be the 24th is our meeting.
Yeah, this was the meeting, right? Because it got pushed off.
We couldn't attach it to the, to the workshop.
Yeah, I mean, right. Why not do that? I mean, I, I don't have any objection to doing that.
It's early in April. I don't know how many people are gonna be here.
Well, the request from the homeowners and what I just heard is do it in April, so...
Wednesday morning, so, you know.
You know what? I've heard the same thing from homeowners about the summer, because, hey, I ran out my house. I'm there all the time during the rest of the year.
I can't say what happened in the past or didn't happen in the past, but we have a new president of the homeowners association who sent, took the time to send a letter asking it be in April. We have that reiterated. What, what's your role, Jan? You're the vice pre- are you the vice president?
You're a board member.
Board member. I, I, you know, let's do it at the workshop instead.
RBHA has its annual meeting the third Saturday of April, so I think they're sort of, of the opinion that that's when people are starting to come back, you know, I guess. But, I mean, I think a day of the week matters. You know, if we did it in conjunction with the workshop, that's a Monday morning. I don't know if that's as good as a Friday afternoon or something.
Mr. Solicitor, can, can I ask where we stand with potential litigation directly related to, to some of these things?
Yeah, I don't have the dates in my mind, um, real clear, but, but...
I'm assuming that the Board of Adjustments has continued to hold off issuing their written...
No, I, I, I believe that one of the written, one of the written decisions has already been issued, so they're in a 60-day window, I think, of having to appeal within those 60 days. So there's, there's a, I think there's a real clock running on at least one of them.
Okay. I, not that that should bear our decision, I just, I think we should be informed. I, I'm, just one last thing. I'm still unclear. I, I think we've had consensus on, on much of this. Uh, commercial property, balconies, I'm unclear where we, where we stand on that.
I don't think we know yet.
Yeah, I think we all decided there was not a consensus that we'll have a conversation about that at the public hearing. That's basically what I...
Then I, I think that's, that's more of a reason.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna have a draft, it should have something where we're going, rather than say it's blank.
Oh, at the March workshop.
Yeah. I mean, what I'm gonna try and draft, and I'm not sure exactly how it's gonna look at this point, but what I'm gonna try and draft is an ordinance that says this in layman's terms. I'm gonna walk to a property, and at any given spot, I'm gonna say in my mind, do I feel like I'm inside the building, or do I feel like I'm outside the building? If I feel like I'm inside the building, that's gonna be counted as gross floor area. If I feel like I'm outside of the building, it's not gonna be counted, unless it's an open porch. That will be counted, except that 250 square feet of an open front porch will be excluded. I'm gonna, that's like the basic guidelines of what I'm gonna use to try and, try and draft something. Under that analysis, however, I think that if I'm standing on a balcony, in my mind, I would say I'm not inside the building. So under this draft of the ordinance, a balcony will not be included with gross floor area, unless you choose to do something different.
But, but the mayor's idea was to have that as an incentive, to, to give away some of that, just like we do with porches. That's what's...
Well, why don't we go with his, what he has, and get that from the public? We just need something to discuss it with the public. Maybe the public comes back and says...
At the workshop.
At the workshop.
Okay. Okay, yeah, let's...
Okay, so he's throwing something. You got something for the workshop. And Jan, And Ann, if you could put that on, we'll discuss further.
Let me see if I have it straight.
At the March workshop, we're going to continue the discussion.
You're going to adopt the resolution tonight?
Tonight, we're going to adopt it for some time in the future.
That part hasn't happened yet, if it's going to happen.
That hasn't happened yet. But at the March workshop...
Are you going to adopt the resolution without having, setting the date for...
No, 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 no. But we haven't decided whether it's going to be March or April, as of yet. We're going to decide within the next five minutes. However, the March workshop, just continue this discussion. Okay. All right, now, now, the next thing on the agenda is set the resolution for a public hearing. Should we set it for March, or should we set it for April?
Is there a push, for some reason, to get it in March, other than...
No, just we've been talking about it, but, you know, I can go either way.
I mean, if the public, you know, if the homeowners' association really is pushing for April, I think we ought to do that.
I expect the room to be filled.
And not give us two workshop meetings to hash some of this stuff out.
Right, exactly.
We'll depend on you, you're a board member.
Can you vote on the Monday morning, not Tuesday?
All right.
You know, I'll see voters on Saturday, and the room's going to be filled.
Okay.
Could do it on Saturday.
All right.
I support the Friday and April.
So then the 24th?
All right. So, Glenn, can we look at the resolution? So we're on B now.
People are away the previous week.
So the resolution would be for the April 24th meeting. So we're 60 days out.
So you're going to adopt the resolution tonight?
Tonight.
For the April?
Yes, if that's okay with you.
So, yeah, so what you need is a motion?
Uh, yes, but...
There's no date in here yet, so it's a, it's a motion to adopt the resolution setting a public hearing for April 24th, 2020, at 3 o'clock PM.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution by the commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach proposing that a public hearing be held on the subject of amending the Rehoboth Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 270, by amending Sections 270-4 and 270-21 relating to gross floor area. And again, the date will be April 24th, which is the date of our next regular, or two regular meetings out, but April. Any further questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, now we go on to the next thing. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you for the comments. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Have a good night, everybody.
Hopefully you're getting paid overtime.
Yeah, we may.
Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
It's not in the budget.
It's not in the budget. Okay, now, we are on C, which is consideration and possible vote to accept the bid for the Wayfinding Signage Project. I think this should be pretty simple. We had the discussion this morning about this. I have not heard from anybody that there was any further discussion. Again, the bid would be the recommendation of Bob Palmer, our engineer, for Hilton Displays LLC, who was the low bidder, at a total of $236,271.75. Any discussion before we get a motion? If not, if...
I move this board accepts the bid as presented to us.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Hilton Displays LLC, who was the apparent low bidder, with a total bid with all add alternate bid items of a total of $236,271.75. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And then, the last is consideration and possible vote on the acceptance of a bid recommendation for the construction of the Grove Park Canal Access. And remember, as we mentioned, the bid deadline on the bid that we have is March 8th. Therefore, a motion needs to be made allocating a total project construction budget of $1,354,306, which is the total of the low bid, which was $1,254,306, and an additional $100,000 contingency fund that is part of the total bid. Any, oh, that's right, she left. Any further discussion?
I think I, however it's appropriate, I actually would like to add in the things that, well, at least the fact into this vote, that an MOU, you know, subject to the fact that an MOU will be established, that outlines the operational and financial agreements between the City of Rehoboth and the nonprofit.
And that's something you could put forward, something pretty simple.
Assuming that you're...
Yeah, I was just going to ask the question. Is that something that would work?
We actually were talking about that during the previous discussion.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Is there going to be any further opportunity for public comment, or are you about to vote on it?
We're about to vote on it? You can, you can make another comment, as long as you don't put anything new in?
I'll sign on to the thing that's done in time.
Okay, but if you can hold on for a second. Commissioner Schlosser, did you have anything else?
No, I'd just like that added into the motion, so it's part of what we agreed to, going, you know, as part of this approval. And, but number two, and this doesn't have to be in the vote, but I just, my understanding is that we aren't going to remove any of the critical projects from the CIP, or any of the projects from the CIP dated February 21st, to fund this initiative. That doesn't need to be in the vote. I just want a head nod or such from the city manager and the commissioners, that that is the intent.
I don't know, I don't know that if we can put that pressure on her to say, you can't touch anything else. As much as possible, I think she knows that we would like not to. So I think that should do that.
Yeah, because I want the critical stormwater and all those things that we have to get done included. I don't want them taken out. I don't think anybody does.
That's good.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes, please.
I think most of us know how this vote is going to go. We see the block up here, we see you've already expressed your support for this, with possibly one exception. But I think the haste and the frenzy that you're adopting toward this, when the public private partnership is short on funds, knowing the way these things go, probably shorter on funds than anyone has ever, has acknowledged yet, and I hope you'll reconsider and decide that, you know, you can't have everything. And at this point, we, I would like to see the stormwater and urgent infrastructure addressed, because if you go this route with this, as you have with the Wayfinding Signage, you will, I fear, and I'm almost confident, be asking the residents, well, the property owners, to pay a stormwater fee by December 2020. And I don't think that's the right thing to do in this sort of climate, when you've just had such precipitous hikes in water and wastewater rates and in property taxes. I could actually live with this, if you want to say this is contingent on a moratorium on property tax increases until like 2022. And look, I don't know whether any of you bothered to look at my proposal for a rebate on water and wastewater rates, which would be for people who use water and wastewater, well, use water between October 1st and March 31st, up to $100. So I just, I'm very worried that you're about to go ahead with this, and I hope some of you will reconsider why we want to get involved in, you know, financing something a bit risky at this point, including the dredging going forward, when it's been stated several times, the Army Corps of Engineers is sorely short of funding and manpower to do the requisite dredging, starting two years from now, or starting sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, assuming we're going to look at it, MOU, that Glenn's going to work with the group on, there needs to be a motion, should be made, again, allocating total project construction budget of $1,354,306.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for construction of the Grove Park Canal Access Project from Thompson &amp; Sons Contracting, Inc., for a total project cost of $1,354,306, of which $1,074,204.63 will be funded by the Lewis-Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association, and $280,101.37 are funded by the City of Rehoboth.
Point of order, Mayor, on that, subject to the completion of an MOU between the parties of the city and the...
Yeah, and before we do that, I would go back, I don't think there's any need for you to put in the 280.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think the motion should be made allocating a total project construction of 1,345, based on 1,245, whatever, plus 100,000. But the 280 is, the city is committing to this bid, and hopefully, it's less than 280. And I don't think that needs to be in the record for the 280, because we've discussed that.
But if it was more, you'd be committed to that.
That's a good point.
If there are cost overruns?
Uh, yeah.
And, but, so, maybe there's a reason for them not to raise any more money, because we put 280 in this. See, my whole thing is, accept the low bid of $1,354, and we're hoping that the city doesn't have to put anything, but we're committing to this bid.
Then you've just got, you've just got an open checkbook, that's all. You know?
Well, not if you add in the subject to the completion of the MOU.
Doesn't happen that way.
Well, I may not, but that's what it sounds like. I mean, yeah, I like the MOU.
Could you say not to exceed, add not to exceed one point, or, you know, the total amount of the bid? I think I'd feel more comfortable if it was not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And then add specifically in subject to the completion of the...
So not to exceed the 280?
Uh, no, not to exceed the one point.
Oh, the total? Okay, right, okay.
I think that's the right way to do it. So that puts a cap on it, and then add in the...
You may want to revise your motion.
Yes.
Please.
Okay. So I move that we accept the bid for construction of Grove Park Canal Access, submitted by Thompson &amp; Sons Contracting, Inc., for $1,265,286, or $1,254,306, plus a $100,000 contingency for a total project cost of $1,354,306, subject to execution of an MOU between the City of Rehoboth Beach and the Lewis-Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association.
And I would make sure you put in not to exceed $1,354, if you, can you put that in your motion?
I can do it again.
No, 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 not to do it again.
Oh, yes.
But just, just at the end.
Well, amended, amended to that the total project cost is not to exceed $1,354,306.
Yes, okay. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to allow, bless you, a lot of total project construction budget not to exceed $1,354,306, subject to an MOU between the City of Rehoboth and the Lewis-Rehoboth Canal Improvement Association. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go down the list. Commissioner Shrazowski.
Aye, this is a tough one. I'm going to vote yes, only because I am confident that the organization will raise the 280. I do not believe that the city should be paying for any of this.
Commissioner Scheffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Aye, for the same reasons my colleague Edward stated. I do believe the money's going to be raised, and I think that we need to be clear in the MOU about the expectation.
Commissioner Byrne?
I vote aye. And let me just add, I don't think we're doing this in haste. I don't think we're taking on a great deal of risk. I think it's a solid project. People have been working on this for 10 years. It's $1.1 million in the bank, free money to us, and I'm confident that the nonprofit that we are going to develop an MOU with will, will come through on raising the balance. So I'm very supportive of this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
No. And I want to make it clear that I'm not against the Canal Dock Project. What I'm against is the process that brought us to where we are today in the 11th hour, and the fact that this, and I don't doubt that they can raise the money, that's why we talked about that earlier, all kind of options existed for that. But for this to be, to go ahead of everything else in the capital improvement plan, when so many other things are better defined and more urgent, is irresponsible, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. We're going to move, there is no new business. Any commissioner comments? Was that? Oh, I'm sorry. The chair votes aye. The motion passes. Any commissioner comments? No? Future meeting dates, as of right now, March 9th is our workshop, March 20th is our regular meeting, April 6th is the next workshop in April, and again, April 24th, not the 17th, is our next regular meeting, after the March regular meeting.
Mayor, I just have a question.
Oh, sure, please.
Should, I mean, we know that we have to have a couple other meetings, one in March and one in April, that'll coincide with regularly scheduled meetings to review the performance appraisal of the city manager, and to make a decision on any salary or, and/or bonus associated with that performance review. And so I would propose that we have the meeting to discuss performance on March 20th, at a time that makes best sense, and maybe, maybe at 1 o'clock, or something like that, before the 3 o'clock meeting, and then to have the follow-up meeting on, could we do it on April 6th?
I think so.
You know, maybe at 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, both days.
And April 6th is the workshop in April, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner, is the Personnel Committee meeting on this before, or it will be the entire board?
It'll be the entire board.
All right.
Say it again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
Oh, it'll be for all of us.
And is the executive session involved, or how does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
I know you sent some information about that.
But I just want to make sure that the fact that we're conducting these meetings is made public.
Right, yeah, exactly. But which one is the executive session? The one, the first one?
Both.
Both are, okay.
Probably both.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's, okay, so, those are the four meetings, all set up, 1 o'clock, 1 o'clock, on these tentative meetings. And I'll send something out, because I'm going to send something out in the next day or so, with the form and whatnot. Those are the dates. Any citizen comment? Please.
Thank you for sticking it out. Well, teenager and husband are off at the sub shop, I think, on the highway. Suzanne Good, 1 Grove Street. I'd like you to exhibit more transparency in communicating with us as to how Clear Space Theater has chosen to pull what I call a Dogfish Head stunt, dividing it, as Dogfish Head did, to divide itself into Chesapeake and Maine, and Dogfish obviating any parking, whereas the former Dogfish Head, I think, had probably 18 or 20 parking spaces. How you're allowing this, why the public learned, I think on January 1st or 2nd, that Clear Space had gone to closing on December 30th. There seems to be a lot of behind-the-scenes dealings, dealings, even the gentlemen who live right behind the theater have been kept into the dark, kept in the dark, as to how this possibly, what building inspector approved this dividing into, I think, around 5,000 feet for rehearsal space, and 10,000 feet for, square feet for the 250-seat theater itself. And there's no parking, for instance, on Sussex Street, behind that theater on a Friday night in July, starting about, I mean, all day long. So explain how this is going to work. As far as I'm concerned, they purchased three lots, and they better pray that real estate, real estate prices appreciate around here in the next 10 years, more than they have in the past decade. have in the past decade, because I think they need to put that right back on the market. Thank you.
As far as I know, no plans have been submitted.
Yeah, just, just to, so you have the facts. Number one, we have no control whatsoever, you can please sit down, that's fine. We have no control whatsoever of someone purchasing a property. That took place December 31st. You know, that's not our job to publicize that. Number two, they have not submitted any plans whatsoever, in any kind of new way. Will they at some point in time? They have taken out a permit for demolition of the two structures that are on the property. Those are the facts. Anything else? Anybody?
I just want to add, Suzanne, we know nothing more than you know. We know only what's in the newspaper.
That's their risk, they bought.
No, we're not communicating or working with them on anything.
I have not been a part of any secret meetings.
And there are already three separate lots. There are three separate lots that exist.
Anything, anything else? Anybody? Thank you very much. I apologize for being so long.